Thank you for joining us this evening for the June 4th, 2024, in Montessorino Regular City Council Meeting. Before the meeting is called to order, I would like to point out a few house rules to assist council members, staff, and members of the public to successfully participate in this meeting. For tonight's meeting, Zoom is being used to allow public participation with the regular city council meeting. For those using Zoom to participate, there are two icons, chat and raise hand. Please use chat only to report technical issues such as being unable to hear a council member speaking. Please use raise hand to be recognized by the mayor and able to speak to the council. Only attendees using this Zoom application can be, can use the raise hand option to comment. Participants calling in from the telephone will only be able to listen and cannot provide feedback or public comment. And last thing, when we're not all in the same room, all those in the meeting must be taken far away.
Welcome, everybody. I'm calling the meeting, a regular meeting of the Montessorino City Council on June 4th to order at 7:01 PM. And we do a roll call. Or no, we do the pledge of allegiance, right? I have asked and has agreed Seth Shalit, Chief Executive Officer of the Santa Clara County Fire Safe Council, to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Good evening. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the rule of the judicial stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I do. So maybe do a roll call.
There you go. Senator. Councilmember Kernan, here. Councilmember Vekashev.
Present.
Councilmember Lothe.
Present.
Vice Mayor Frey.
Here.
And Mayor Will Kinnon.
Present.
All present.
I'll order stuff today. I would like to make one change. There is one gentleman here who would like to address us under oral communications. And I would like to move that past the very next agenda item and then have another round of oral communications after the presentations. So please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and council members for accommodating my coming first. My name is Patrick Kearns and I'm a member of RATES. And I want to thank Montessorino for its support, which it has given to a volunteer organization, RATES, which stands for Water Rate Advocates for Transparency, Equity, and Sustainability. And I'm here in terms of a request that we have received from the CPUC during the proceeding. And the request is that citizens and all categories of water drinkers address the commissioner and the administrative law judge in a public participation hearing so that the CPUC can gather opinions about a request from Santa Fe Water Company to increase their water rates for businesses and customers, residences throughout their area, which is Santa Clara County. And I think I did mention that rates, W rates is the other way people refer to it, which is W R A T E S or all run together rates, W R A T E S. So Montessorino has been very supportive of our goals. And I think they're shared goals. And the shared goals have been changing the culture of the CPUC to one of reasonableness for a rate of return on investment, to reasonableness and affordability for the customers. And that's a huge seismic shift in what we started to run into as advocates at the CPUC meetings. You have supported the case for the RATES customers. And the CPUC has, I think, changed dramatically this year. And they are holding a public participation hearing, and that is on June 13th. And you may have already gotten the announcement from the CPUC sent to you via email. If not, you will get it tomorrow with all of the details of what the CPUC is trying to accomplish. One of the first steps that a general rate case deals with is an application from a utility. And the application asks for usually an increase in rates so they can increase their revenue. And that will allow them to improve conditions for delivering water. You may have gotten your notice today from PG&E and they told you that there are 1,000 people in this area, Los Cadasan, Montessorino, without power. And that is a result of the CPUC pushing and enforcing the safety and deliverability of power and water telephones and on. So the commission wants to hear from customers on a remote Zoom, WebEx actually, communication. And that will be chaired by the Commissioner Darcy Huck and Judge Douglas Long. And they welcome and encourage comments, and you will see that. Is it three minutes? Okay, I'm done.
Okay.
And again, thank you very much. And if you need any questions, I will answer your questions.
Do you mind if you get your name here?
Patrick Kearns. And that's W R A T E S, rates, K E A R N S.
Do you have any email contact or anything else you'd like to share with us?
Sure. Rates@Yahoo.com.
Thank you. That's W rates, correct?
W rates.
Share that, thank you. All right. I'm sure you have a question also.
Yeah, I've got, I've got a few questions. You mentioned that San Jose Water Company wants to increase their revenues and correspondingly increase the rates that consumers pay, is that correct?
That is the way they increase their revenue through increased rates, higher bills.
Okay. Is it true that they want to increase rates by 11.11% in 2025, 3.99% in 2026, and 4.49% in 2027?
And that's a quote from the application, but they are able to give a 45-day update. And they have reduced that a little bit, but essentially, if you round those figures, they still want that increase.
Okay, thank you. Is it true that San Jose Water Company's, the legal entity, San Jose Water Company, their net income was over $56 million in 2020, in the year ended December 31, 2023? And they're requesting $113 million more in revenue over the next three years?
And there's an important distinction that there is a San Jose Water Company and a San Jose Water Group. And it's the San Jose Water Company, actually the company that delivers your water, that is asking and has made that amount of money and are asking for the $113 million in addition to the $56 that they pocketed last year, last three years. And that's 113 over three years.
Those are my questions.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? In that case, thank you very much for your resolution. And yeah, we're, as you said, we're really supportive of your efforts.
And all of the members of RATES know that Montessorino has contributed and appreciate it. Thank you all very much.
So you're on your way to Los Cadasan to do the same thing?
Yes. Thank you.
Coming back to orders of the day, are any orders of the day? In that case, we will go to, let's see. Announcements?
Yeah. I sent out an email earlier. Basically, there's a mental health association, greater medical testing. Hopefully, you guys, I just said it on my behalf, let me go. So Naissa was the chair and requested that all of us attend. Call me or check it, it's excuse, but we'll be in Argentina. So unless you guys are going to be in Argentina, if you can make it, that'd be great. So please take a look at that email and let us know if you can make it or not make it. You're going to have to go to and the city association, right? So all the other locals in the council, we don't.
Great. So we all have the reminder already, so in email?
Yes, you already have an email. And I just missed me forward and Naissa's email.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure. Online.
Your announcements, seeing none. We will move on to presentations. And now I'd like to introduce Seth Shalit, CEO of the organization. I think Ms. Perkins has a brief introduction.
Hello, good evening. I am Diana Perkins, the city's planner. At the council's goal setting workshop earlier this year, a goal to provide safe evacuation routes throughout the city was included as a priority for the upcoming fiscal year. The Santa Clara County Fire Safe Council is a nonprofit organization that assists jurisdictions within the county to prevent and reduce losses from wildfires. Seth from the Fire Safe Council is here tonight and he will provide some information on how their organization can assist the city in meeting the goal of providing safe evacuation routes, both along Highway 9 as well as in the very high fire hazard severity areas of the city. And then this item is being presented tonight so that later in the agenda, when the council discusses the budget for next year, if there is funding that you would like to consider to contract with the Fire Safe Council for their efforts, that could be discussed with that future agenda.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Diane.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you, council members and members of the public that may be attending. Also, let me just say thank you for the opportunity to lead the council allegiance. I was thinking I probably haven't led one since third grade back in 71. So I'm glad I think I got it right. So I appreciate that. Well, I think online with me is Amanda Brenner Cannon. And I'm not sure if she is able to speak and identify herself.
I am.
Thank you for joining me, Amanda, I appreciate that. And the presentation I walked you through tonight is, but over that I created. But let me just first start off, simply the headquarters literally down the street in the foundation on the corner of Big Basin and Saratoga Sunnydale Avenue. How many people here are familiar with the Santa Clara County Fire State Council? So only a few. So I wanted to give you a very brief history. Obviously, I can go offline with Diana or any of the council members and give a more detailed discussion, but I know you've got a couple of key points tonight. So we are an independent 501(c) nonprofit. We were started probably about 21 years ago as a 501(c)(3) and mostly from people like yourselves, local residents that were concerned about wildfire risk going back 20, 22 years ago. A smattering of retired fire service, county fire, or cow fire personnel, but mostly people that wanted to really engage their neighborhood to make sure that they can mitigate the risk mostly to their own individual properties. Well, fast forward 15 years or so and the organization has grown substantially. In fact, we are the largest nonprofit focusing on wildfire mitigation and risk reductions. Our revenues this year would be somewhere in the $7.5 to $8 million range. And we are a key partner and I'll walk you through some of the slides and then I'll give an opportunity for Amanda to interject. So if someone can move to the next slide, thank you. So a mission statement, we all know what they are, but we really try to adhere to keeping our mission statement simple. And that's mobilizing the people of Santa Clara to protect their homes, communities, and environments from wildfires. That's our focus. We cover a broad spectrum of wildfire safety and wildfire mitigation. And we'll talk a little bit about that. Next slide, please. Project management. So hopefully, most of you know that there is a community wildfire protection plan for the county of Santa Clara. We are the authors of that plan. But we actually authored the plan in 2016 and then recently completed an approximately 18-month update of the entire county's wildfire mitigation plan, which identifies risks, hazards, areas to focus on. And our job as the county administrator, we were awarded a grant about a year and a half ago to serve as the county administrator. And we manage all aspects of that plan, working with county fire, cow fire, and all of the various annexes. And Amanda, to bring you into the mix, I think we have about 20 annexes, correct me? Is that a number sounded out right?
18 and growing.
By chance, you happen to know the annex that money, of course, I'm putting you on the spot, but the the annex number for Montessorino.
I'd have to look it up. Diana might have it on top of her.
Raise your hand if you know you have an annex. Well, hopefully, and that's okay, that's not, we often find that people aren't aware of what their annex is. But irrespective of what we talk about tonight, our job will be to work with Diana and the team to help update your annex, bring it current and actually put it into the updated community wildfire prevention plan. But our core capabilities are wildfire protection planning, forest health, which we'll talk about. We design and harden evacuation routes. And we create and manage to treat strategic fuel breaks to mitigate their impacts. Next slide, please. Thank you. So a couple of the key things that we focus on are, we conduct what's known as HIZs. The acronym stands for Home Ignition Zone Inspections. And those inspections follow what's known as the NFPA, National Fire Protection Agency Guidelines. And it's basically, we come into your home with one of our trained staff and we have six or seven trained and certified assessors. And with the resident, we can actually conduct about an hour, maybe sometimes an hour and 20 minutes inspection and identify all of the fire hazard risks on your property, including those in your house, whether they be vents or lack of proper vents, or hazard trees on your property, or vegetation too close to your house. And we provide a written assessment that we can then provide to the homeowner. And then the ultimate goal is to have that homeowner take action, right? At the end of the day, right? The old saying is you can lead a horse to water, but you can't make them drink. And one of the greatest challenges we often face is we can tell the residents what to do, but it's getting them to take action. And that's really where our job comes in. And we want to help residents kind of cross that chasm and take action so they can reduce their wildfire risk. We maintain the annual county chipping program. Last year, we were awarded a five-year contract, a $1,250,000 contract. That's administered by county fire. You, of course, Montessorino is in the county fire district. So we do chip you. It's part of the county fire program. And Amanda will talk a little bit about that because we want to encourage every resident that can to participate in that program. We have a number of fuels reduction programs. And Amanda, just to bring you in, I think, why don't you walk through the neighbor-to-neighbor and the what we call special needs assistance programs?
Yeah, and just really quickly on the chipping program, I can cover it some more in an oncoming slide. You know, previous to our contract with county fire to support the chipping program, we were using grant funding support to support the county, including Montessorino. So in the past few years, we've serviced close to 30 residents in Montessorino using grants the Fire Safe Council secured. And that's connected to the home ignition zone assessments as well. You know, we're invited to residents' homes, residents invite us to their homes to provide them some information and education. And they do the work and the chipping program helps further reduce those fuels. There are cost share programs that we have, and we can go into more detail, but essentially, depending on if it's a community-level project or a resident-level project, residents that need, you know, just special assistance, they're low-income or just can't do work on their own. We have opportunities to provide some, and those are grant-funded as well currently. And then the Saratoga Dead Tree Rebate Program is a program that we have, another cost share program. And we are working with Diana and the city of Montessorino to sort of replicate that and enhance that program to serve the residents of Montessorino here in the coming future. And then just community education, one of the things that I neglected to add to the slide is Firewise USA. That's the community-level education component that's really important. You know, we talk about resident education, but it's also a community level. But we can, Fire Safe Council, again, it's typically grant-funded, but we offer presentations and workshops and tabling different events as well. So this is just a list of, you know, grant-dependent programs that the Fire Safe Council offers to our communities in high wildfire risk areas in Santa Clara County.
Thank you, Amanda, and next slide, please. And by the way, we have for the last many years, we already administer and run the dead tree programs for the city of Saratoga and Saratoga Fire District. And we also have a contract with Las Altos Hills Fire District that we provide a larger venue of services. So we've got many years of expertise in doing that. Well, we collaborate with all of those agencies that you see pretty extensively. And I think that's one of the real core values of the Fire Safe Council is we have a lot of former cow fire and county fire people on our staff that are trained in all aspects of fuels reduction and wildfire management. But we're independent, so we're not a county agency. And I think that's an important distinction because in my experience, I think residents are more amenable to work with us. They are less fearful that we might write them up or ticket them if we see a violation on their property. In fact, we don't do that. Our job is to build rapport and to make sure that we can get them to take action. We're not here in a authoritarian way. We don't have any capabilities or teeth to be able to write people up, but we work closely with them. And being an independent nonprofit, our experience really shows, I think, we tend to engender a little bit more engagement around wildfire risk reduction. Next slide, please. So ultimately, these slides here really delve into the discussions we've had with Diane over the coming, I don't know, last four or five weeks, just to talk about what the city may need, what the challenges you have. And so I'd like to bring Amanda because since she gave her night to sit by the Zoom speaker, I want to bring you into the presentation too. And maybe you and I can dovetail and share this slide together.
Yeah, thank you. And I do apologize for not being able to make it in person, but I do appreciate the opportunity to come virtually. So these two priorities are ones that were identified, that were brought to us by the city of Montessorino. And I just wanted to break them out and then talk about the different programs. I'd mentioned the programs and projects that the Fire Safe Council has ongoing. But looking at these priorities that the city has brought to us, you know, what can the Fire Safe Council do to address these things? And we can work in partnership with some of our other partners, including county fire. And I'll get into that in a little bit as we progress. But assessing evacuation routes, looking at access fuels, whether due to falling trees, dead trees, whatever, from public and private property. And then the second one is to increase awareness of the fire wind danger related to poorly maintained vegetation. And for the first point, I see that being more on the level of sort of project management. And the second one, I see some of our services being a lot of that outreach, communication and outreach. Next slide. So in trying to identify our first priority, I see the Fire Safe Council Services being project scoping, assessing the fuels buildup, and then creating a project plan for project implementation, and then also grant writing and fundraising. So where a needs assessment is made and a project is identified, how do we, how do we get that work done? Is there a, you know, are there funds within the city? Or do we need to do some more fundraising through grants and other opportunities? So grant writing is something else that the Fire Safe Council can offer. And then once fundraising is established, a grant or whatever monies are identified and we can move forward with the project, Fire Safe Council can do project implementation. We do project manager, project management, management, sorry, from that assessment, project scoping, grant writing, planning, implementation, and finishing. So really soups to nuts. Next, and I do it on this slide too, you know, the costs to this sort of implementation can vary between, based on size and scope and how much fuels, complexity of the project, and so on and so forth. So it's sort of the starting price for project scoping. It really entails staff time, travel to do some ground truthing, things like that. Grant writing, also more staff time. And then project implementation really gets more into hiring contractors, permitting, SEQA, and all of the things to make sure that we're legally compliant to, to implement that project. Depending on, again, on the size and complexity of the project can be anywhere between $15,000 to $300,000. Next slide.
And one thing I think, if I may just interject, you know, typically, we work through statements of work, SOWs, where we work on the parameters and the requirements of projects. We typically work on a time and material basis, but we certainly can consider fixed-price projects as well. It really depends upon the complexity of the project. And if we think we have a clear understanding and there's a low risk for unexpected pitfalls or things that we didn't anticipate, so we can be flexible with you and take on certain projects on a time and material and/or in a fixed fee basis. Amanda?
Yeah, thank you. So the second priority that was brought to us was increasing awareness of fire wind danger related to poorly maintained vegetation. So poorly maintained vegetation can be anything from, well, I think we know what poorly maintained vegetation is. Essentially, at the end of the day, it's, it's a buildup of fuels where a fire comes in. It's going to increase the magnitude of the issue. So some of the, again, against with the programs Fire Safe Council offers, and I really do see this one as being a very educational, heavy opportunity, are those home ignition zone assessments that Seth had mentioned earlier. It's the opportunity for us to empower homeowners to take action and do work on their own. So giving them that report that says this is what you can do to make your homes defensible space better. And a lot of that is vegetation management. So once those homeowners do vegetation management, comes the community chipping program. And we do manage, again, the community chipping program. This is at no cost to Montessorino. This is part of our agreement with county fire. Montessorino is part of the county fire district area and is covered through our grant or contract with them. And as mentioned previously, it was.
Amanda, if I may, there's a question and sure, we'll be glad to take it.
We talked about chipping program, can you explain what that means?
Yeah, so chipping means we will come to the house. The county chipping program doesn't allow us, because it's county funds, to go onto private property. But if the resident does their chipping work, which means cutting down branches, brush, things of that nature, we have a program, we manage that, we go out to bid and manage the contractors. They'll come onto the property and bring all of that material away. They can either chip it back on-site or we can hold the material away.
Yeah, typically, we do it on-site, but the homeowners do the work to remove the, to do the the tree limbing and this or that, and then they pile it. And you have specific ways to do that, and they'll pile it in the public right-of-way. And then our contracted chipping crews will come roadside and chip that on-site.
And just one other point, I'm sure everyone here is aware of this, and we're almost done. But you can do a lot with an individual home, you know, what we call defensible space. But to get real risk, you have to really do it at the community or landscape level, right? I mean, fire, it's like a link in the chain. And a fire will find its way to the weakest, the weakest point in the chain. So we really want to focus on community-wide landscape risk reduction, not just doing one or two homes, but doing it across the community so that we can really limit the risk of fire coming into the community or should it come into the community, have it be really deleterious and impact many homes. So that's the goal of where our work is. Amanda, continue on, please. Next slide.
Yeah, thank you for that question about the community chipping program. We can definitely get in the weeds in giving the little. giving a little bit more background of what these projects and programs do. The final one was workshops, and what I failed to mention on the last slide is Firewise USA support is another thing, and that speaks to the community level wildfire resilience work. So Firewise USA is a national program, and it's one that we're very connected to and can help support communities on the community level and not just the homeowner level. So Seth, I will let you take the last slide for wrapping up.
Yeah, ultimately, as I said before, we've got a long history and a reputation, and I'm glad to let your town managers and anybody speak to your counterparts in the other towns. But the point we want to get today is obviously, we can work with you. Ultimately, if you decide to allocate some funding for wildfire risk reduction, we can come up with a custom program based frankly on the amount of dollars that you decide to allocate. So at a high level, that's really what we cover. If we were to recommend anything, we would recommend where you would have the greatest bang or impact would be HIC assessments and workshops for the residents of Montessorino on how to evacuate, how to pack a go bag, how to do defensible space so that they understand where within your house framework, within a hundred feet of the house, you can get the most mitigation value. And of course, things like grant writing, et cetera, as Amanda said, we have that service where we often provide grant funding to our clients. And if there are projects that you want to fund, we can help to look to see if we can come up with funding support. So at a real high level, that's it. I want to thank you, and of course, I'm open, Amanda and I are open to any questions you may have about whatever we discussed. Yes, please.
Yes, I have a question. You talk about grant funding. We have a grant writer
Yes.
So is that something you could work with so that we're not double dipping into our
Absolutely.
One hundred percent. In fact, if you have your own grant writer, that's even better. Certainly, right? The key is knowing where to look, right? Because sometimes the wildfire brands aren't obvious, and you have to be a little bit creative. But absolutely, we can work with your grant writer and give him, give he or she their pointers, so for sure.
Yeah, and I'd say too, some of the wildfire-specific grants are a bit different than traditional grants. The Community Wildfire Defense Grant, for one, is one that it's a federal grant that we're really working, trying to work collaboratively on a county level to support programs with, and it's connected to that Community Wildfire Protection Plan and the annexes that Seth spoke to earlier, and that's something that we're working with Diana and your team on. So, yeah, whenever there's a collaborative effort, for sure.
And as you well know, both federal and state grants come with a significant amount of reporting responsibilities. In fact, those are only increasing over time, while the pool of funding seems to be shrinking, but we can work with your grant writer on reporting as well. Any other questions from the council members?
Next slide, by the way.
What do you say, the next reason?
We can show you that on a map, and we can, we can walk you through that with the annex. Since we don't have the annex physically here, it covers part of Montessorino.
It's Annex Eight. If you go, yeah, currently, since we're in the process of updating, and annexes are kind of like a smaller local document and a larger one, so it really brings this countywide planning document to the local level. Two thousand and sixteen is on the County Fire website. I can put a link in the chat, I know it doesn't help those of you in person. But if you do a quick Google search for Santa Clara County CWPP, you'll find two websites. One is on County Fire, and it has the older, unupdated annex documents. And then the other one is the new website. Again, I'll link both in the chat, so at least
It's a website too.
We do.
The document is there, you can pull it up and physically see the map and the boundaries of the annex.
Yeah, so things are kind of split right now as we're in the middle of the process of updating. But between the County Fire website and the new updated, the, the Montessorino, since it's still in the middle of being updated, Annex Eight will be found on the County Fire website, which I put in the chat, and I'll, again, like I said, put the the new website for the, the current updated process in the chat as well.
I want to be cognizant of your time. Are there any other questions?
Sure.
Thank you for the presentation. I'll, oh, first of all, ask, what's your budget again?
Our budget?
Yes.
It should be this year somewhere between seven and a half to eight billion in total revenues.
Okay, ours is like five.
I know that.
Okay.
And ours is typically less, but we've had, the last two years, we've had a lot of success. We've won a total of fourteen million dollars in Sundays from Cal Fire to do grant, what we call Los Gatos Water Shed and some other contracts. So this will probably be our largest revenue year ever, knock on wood.
Okay. In the interest of time, I'll ask you questions offline.
Thank you.
I have two questions, actually.
Yes.
We spoke briefly before the meeting, and I expressed my concern, as I've done many times, about Highway Nine. Highway Nine, to me, is one of the major fire hazards in this area. Many, many hundreds of homes in Los Gatos, Montessorino, Saratoga, the streets feed onto Highway Nine. So if there's ever a big fire and Highway Nine catches on fire, these people have no way out. And I've been on this council my second round now for a year and a half, and I've been trying to get something to happen here. And I'm very frustrated that nothing is happening. So whatever you can do.
Look, we, as it comes to evacuation routes, we work pretty closely with the county. So the county has a program called Zill Haven, hopefully you're familiar with it. It's the tool that they manage the evacuation capabilities and it's, in essence, a CRM system. But we can certainly work with you in conjunction with County Fire and look to dive a little bit deeper and see what issues you want to have addressed around evacuation.
Well, one of the issues, of course, is that Highway Nine is owned by the government.
Yes.
Was not on your list of organizations.
We work closely with Caltrans, so if it's not on our list, that's an oversight. We have to work with them. Obviously, they are inundated, and sometimes response may take a little while, but we work very closely on most of our projects with Caltrans.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll get in touch with you offline to see if we can get something done here.
Please do, and thank you all for your time and courtesy. I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah. Is there any members of the public who wants to comment on this item or ask questions, maybe? No, is anybody online?
No hands raised.
No, thank you. Okay, in that case, we will move on to the next item, which is oral communications. This is an opportunity to address the council on any matter that's not on the agenda today.
No hands are raised.
Here, nobody online raises a hand. Written communications, have we received any written communications? Moving on to the consent calendar. We have six items on the consent calendar today. Usually we vote on all items at the same time. I'll let one of the council members watch it.
Yeah, I'd like to pull out those four and six.
Four and six. And your items?
I would like to abstain from item number three, so if you collect the other items, then I can vote on it.
So let's see, why don't we address items numbers two and five first? Those are the items that were not pulled or? Yep.
I'll make a motion after your public motion.
Public comment?
No hands raised.
Nobody here? Anybody here looking at the?
I'll make motion to approve items three and five on the consent calendar.
Two.
Sorry, two and five.
Two and five.
Sorry, thank you. Second.
All in favor, you say aye?
Aye.
Items two and five were approved unanimously.
I will move to approve item three.
Second. All in favor to approve item number three? You say aye?
Aye.
Anybody wants to abstain?
Abstain.
Four, zero, one. Moving on to item four. You wanted to pull the other song?
Good evening again. This item is the annual review of the city's fee schedule for user and regulatory fees and consideration of increasing the fees based on the Consumer Price Index inflation rate of two point six percent, which was for the year two thousand and three. The majority of the city's fees are related to providing building, planning and engineering services for new construction and alterations to existing houses. State law mandates that the fees charged for these services cannot exceed the cost of providing such service. In two thousand and eighteen, the city hired a consultant to complete a fee study to determine the actual cost of providing these permitting services. And based on the results of that study, an updated fee schedule was approved by the city council at that time. That study in two thousand and eighteen also recommended that the city increase fees annually based on the CPI. So staff does recommend that the city council adopt the draft resolution and increase the user and regulatory fees by two point six percent. And that completes the staff report, having to answer any questions.
Thanks. I have comments or any questions, so recall and get to the comment back. Any questions about this item? I guess we need to do a public comment on this. So is there anybody in chambers here who wishes to comment on item number four? No, is there anybody online to raise your hand? Now we're ready for comments.
Yeah, so my, my thought of the reason for pulling this item is we're limiting our increase to the CPI. And I don't think the staff report in two thousand and eighteen required that. But it's done, the study that was done back in two thousand and eighteen, it limited. The limit really state law limit which says you should not be charging fees more than what it costs you. And until two thousand and eighteen, we've been, we've increased, I think, once or twice based on CPI. Our staff costs itself is going up by four point six percent according to the staff report. But we're only increasing the permit fees by the inflation amount is two percent. So we're going to be subsidizing an extra two percent of the fee amount based on our staff report going high. And I would, I would like to see us review that and see that the permit fee to at least match, we're already low, our permit fees have always been lower than other cities. We're already low. And I'd like to see us recognize that not increasing it by this, what it's costing us, we're subsidizing it more from the general fund. And when we get to the budget section, we're entitled to budget, so we need to look at that. So my, my suggestion is that we look at reviewing this and maybe bringing it closer to the four percent level or closer, or closer to what is our actual staff cost on. And this is an incremental thing, it's not and we're so far down, I mean, the question, do we need to do a formal study on it? Probably not, and the council can probably help us with that. But I think we're so far below the actual fee that it cost us. If you look at the tables, even the study that was done, we're charging only like thirty nine percent. This is on base of the study that was done earlier. At that time, you're only just charging about thirty nine percent of what it was actually costing us. And even with the increase, we're still not there. We came back with a study on what the percentage of the permits are being applied for costs. I don't know if you need to do a formal study, but it should not be that difficult. But we're so far below that, I don't think we have that nature of somebody coming back and say, you're trying to make money off the permit fees. But, and, and fees wise, the permit fees are only eight hundred thousand a year, two percent change with a result of sixty thousand dollars available. We're also subsidizing the EU fees for this year for the people that agree to barely use. So I think we need to take a closer look at that.
I will underscore a council member Lockey's comments in I'm kind of a keep it simple person, rather than being precisely wrong, let's be, you know, generally correct. And I think a simple way of doing it would be to use a inflation adjustment of our staff costs in total, the fully burdened staff costs the current year over the prior year. And if that's four percent or four point six, whatever the number is, I think that's very, that approximates what our costs are. And if you go through and do a full-blown study in another couple of years, I think it will be extremely accurate at that point in time. So I would concur with Councilmember Lai. But, but I, but I would recommend that the calculation be done on our staff costs.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, feedback on this? I think I support the suggestion also, we need to think about a look at this. And I think our city attorney has been
So we absolutely can do that, we can do a study, it depends on, you know, we can look at the old two twenty eighteen study and see what needs to be done to support it, we can't charge any fees greater than the cost of the service that is being provided. So that involves salary and some other components to it as well, so we can look into that. I would recommend that you go ahead and adopt the CPI tonight because it does take sixty days for this to go into effect. And so at least you will be getting that two and a half, two point six percent until the updated rate gets included.
If that board Toledo soon have maybe have two increases within one fiscal year.
So are you saying we need to do a study to increase the rate?
And, and what that study looks like, it can be a quick computation of what that would be, or it could be a further analysis. We'd have to go back and look at the twenty eighteen report to see where it needs to be.
So the staff could do its own study, it doesn't have to be a consulting.
It doesn't have to be, it's just a matter of staff proficiency.
I guess it matters how much the margins are, if you're so far away, we don't need to do a formal study. Okay. That would make sense, and have the staff do a study and see if they're the cost or whether they're closer than
I remember in twenty eighteen when we did this, the two point six percent increase wasn't for all the services. There were some services that we said, we're not going to, we're not going to increase, and I can't remember, to be honest, to do what they are. So I think that's one of the things we need to look at.
And I agree with you, I think that's right. I think I remember that there was a range and the council decided because of the significant increases, if they went with the full one hundred percent recovery, that it was too great. So some were reduced. The two point six is only the CPI that was applied to the fees that were charged last year. So there is some, I think that there are some costs that aren't being recovered because other increases weren't implemented previously. So it may very well be when we sit down and look at the amount that we could actually charge, if it's more than the two point six, that there could be some significant increases.
And I'd just like to comment, a couple of years ago, staff took the two thousand and eighteen report, and we did bring to council upgrades of all the building and permitting fees. We compared with Saratoga, Los Gatos, and other agencies. And we brought them up as much as we could. I think there's a certain limit, if you get far behind, you can only bring it to a certain level in one year's time. And then that's when we added the CPI adjustments, the indexing for inflation to those fees. And that's why every year at budget time, we have this item on our agenda, which I think the CPI is the most that we can increase it by law, essentially on an annual basis without any you know, beg to differ on that?
I beg to differ, there's no law saying that you're speaking about CPI. The law basically says, don't charge more than what it's costing you.
The cost of services, that's all, that's all it takes.
But the study that was done said, these are the fees you could charge, and we would recommend implementing a CPI every year, so you don't get as far behind as you were.
That's, that's what I'm referring to. Thank you.
Okay, so it looks like what we're going to do is accept the increase for now, and we will ask staff to perform a study, potentially leading to another increase sometime this fiscal year.
Yeah, so if I can make a motion. I guess we can approve the staff's report with, with the understanding, staff's going to do a study to see the incremental cost of staff raises that are going to happen because of the union contract. Staff's gonna do a study to see all the incremental costs of staff raises that are gonna happen because of the union contract. Uh, should be brought into it, or whether the permit fees should be increased. In, in, in conformity to the, the increase in the staff salary that are tied to the permitting process.
So you only wanted to factor in staff costs, nothing else?
Uh, I, I materials and other things, alright. Uh, if, yeah, I'll take your suggestions on that.
If I may make, I'd like to second it, but I'd like to make a comment before the second. Um, I think if you look at our budget, most of the numbers are in the staff costs and the contractor costs. So by trying to make the study bigger, it's gonna take more time than I think what it's worth, and if we're gonna be approximately correct. I think that that's what the focus should be, without trying to drill into the minutia of material costs or whatever.
And staff includes contractors' fees.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, but it, it's not necessarily about, uh. The increase in staff costs. If we're only recovering, for example, fifty percent of the real cost right now. That asks for a bigger increase than just staff costs, right? Because we need to somehow catch up to. The real cost.
Well, well, staff costs is both tied to the permitting process, so that's why you're restricted, you can't charge more than what the staff is costing you.
Okay. Alright.
That's my defense.
So, but I think that, um, the mayor's comment is, is correct, that because in the past. The council did not approve fees that were collecting one hundred percent of the actual cost, they were, they were collecting less than hundred percent. If today you only increase it based on the cost sal- salary adjustments. You may get to fifty six percent instead of the fifty two percent where you are, but you're still leaving forty four percent on the table.
Right, I, I guess we'll wait for the, the recommendations from staff as to how much we can increase without looking like we're making money on it. That, that's all I do.
Alright.
I'll second that motion.
Uh, I think we need to do a roll call, notes?
What we're voting on here is two, two point six.
So, so what I think I heard was to approve the two point six now, which is the CPI. And then directing staff to go back and look at the study that was done in two thousand and eighteen. And compare that, those fees to. Where we should be today, given the increases in salary as well as potential. Um, reductions in fees that were approved with the twenty eighteen study.
If we do public comments on this, okay, already? So then, I got it, we're ready for a vote.
Council member turn? Ye- yes. Council member Megatuck?
Aye.
Council member Lockey?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Craig?
Yeah.
And Mayor Walshner?
Yes.
Question carries.
So, may I ask a question then? The, the, since we approved this, will this show on our budget?
No, we won't be able to get it in time for the budget adoption, and we'll just go with the CPI that's in the consent item. But we will adjust it later in the year if council decides to do that, based on the future staff reports. And analysis that we will be bringing forward at some point.
Thank you.
I, I guess maybe I don't understand that. And we have approved the CPI increase, so that can be put in the budget.
That will be in the budget, alright.
CPA increase will be in the budget. But the additional increase will, that will have to come later. The best, so it's going to be all right, it's the same way.
So, to clarify, that will be in the final version of the budget that will be presented.
That is correct.
Alright, um, moving on to the next item, there was proposed, wait for it, item number six. Is there a staff report on this?
Yeah, there is.
Thank you, mayor and council. Tonight, we're going to talk about a resolution required to adopt a list of projects for fiscal year twenty four, twenty five. Which are funded by SB one funds on an annual basis. Basically, the state requires us to have this body approve a set of streets that we can report. And use the monies that they allocate on an annual basis to each city. In our case, uh, the RMA funds for this year will be ninety thousand plus dollars for our projects. The two streets that I have before tonight were already reviewed by previous council here, but were unfunded due to limited. Funding, so I'm bringing those, those two streets, which are both Twin Creek Road and West Elmwood Avenue back to the council. Uh, for approval again, and, uh, approved previously, so we have those, uh, rehabilitated this year in our program.
Okay. Okay, any question, council member?
Yeah, so, uh, basically, these are the worst streets in my street, you know, these places.
These are two of the worst streets, seven forty seven, three PCI rating, yes.
The amount of the staff funding is nine thousand, that's available?
Just of the RMA funding, yes, but we use other funds for annual.
What's going to cost of each two teams?
They will be in the three hundred thousand range.
Each?
No, together.
And so you're gonna bring that back?
We'll bring that back before we award it to you for, yes.
So is this in our budget?
It is in our budget.
It's already been put in the budget.
Yes, sir.
The budget that they haven't approved.
Yes, ma'am. It's waiting for you to discuss this evening, yes.
Any other questions?
Just wanna make sure we know all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Council members, any other questions, office?
Oh, just one other question, is there another street that's not quite so bad, but it's almost there?
Uh, there's several of those.
And what's your PCI running at?
Uh, they're better than the thirty seven or thirty eight, forty seven, they're usually in the fifties.
But they look about their peaks?
Yeah.
And those are not in our budget.
Yeah.
Public comments, anybody, um, doesn't hear in chambers, wish to comment on this item? If anybody online wishes to comment on this item, please raise your virtual hand.
No, I am raising.
Council member, any comments on this item?
So I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay. I guess, do we need to take a roll call or don't this, yes, we do.
Council member Lockey?
Yes.
Council member Turner? Yes, council member Megatuck?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Craig?
Yes.
And Mayor Walshner?
Yes.
Question carries.
Motion carries five, zero, and zero. And that takes care of the consent caliber.
Looks like it said, I guess. But, see, that was what it said.
Yeah. Public hearings, I don't believe we have any public hearings today.
Mayor, I'm just going to suggest that item number ten might be put earlier in the agenda this evening. We have a consultant that is online, that, um. It might be better that they can get through, so they don't have to wait through the other items.
Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
You know, it's David.
Item number ten, considering accepted fiscal year twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three audit reports.
David, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you, can you hear me fine?
Good to you, thank you.
Great, thank you. Sorry, Steve, I got cut off there for a second, do you want me to go ahead and jump in?
Yes, please.
Perfect, let me just fix my video setting, sorry. So good evening, mayor and city council members, my name is David Alvey, and I'm a CPA and an audit partner at Mason Associates. And, uh, we are the city's independent external auditor. And in that role of an independent external auditor, my goal, or my firm's goal, my role. Is to come in and audit the financial statements, the basic financial statements that are presented to you today for the year ending June thirty, twenty twenty three. And render an audit opinion on whether or not, in my firm's, uh, my firm's opinion, that these financial statements are free from material misstatement. Or error. And before I jump into the opinion, I just wanted to do just a really high level overview of the audit process. Although the audit of Montessorino is usually about a week and a half long. Um, in our audit minds, we break it out into two separate phases. The first phase is the interim phase, and during this phase, we're looking at the bones of the city, the internal control environment. We're making sure that a single person cannot initiate, approve and record in the trial balance a transaction. That had not been looked at by anybody else. If we found anything like that, that could be a, uh, an issue for some kind of misstatement, the financial statements, or some kind of error. So, once we get an idea of the bones of the city, that's when we turn off our, uh, interim phase brain. And we click over to looking at balances, so that's when we're looking at your balances of your cash and investments, your capital assets. Your pension liability, your OPEB liability, those type of things, we're looking at those. Um, and then after we get all of our work done, um, we issue our audit opinion. And the audit opinion is on page one. And it's a standard audit opinion, it says that we conducted our audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards. And also to make sure that, in our opinion, that the city's financials are in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, also known as GAAP. And I'm pleased to say it is an unmodified or clean audit opinion. And that's the highest level assurance that a CPA firm can give an entity, so congratulations on getting an unmodified audit opinion. We do have an emphasis of the matter, all paragraphs, talking about a correction in beginning net position and fund balance, we had to make correction due to, um. Some equity accounts, the general fund that were not spread across to the other, uh, funds within the city. That's outlined in note nine, the financials. Couple of quick highlights of the financial statements, your cash increased from, uh, five point eight million to six point five, a lot of that has to do with the shift. Uh, from Leif to the Wells Fargo, uh, investments. Your pension, net pension liability actually was an asset in twenty twenty two, and it flipped to a liability in twenty twenty three. Um, and that's just due to, uh, the years behind. That CalPERS uses in terms of the, uh, the funds that are in there and what the market is doing, so the market is a little bit different than it was. A couple of years ago, and that, that has a lag on hitting what it's doing to the net pension life. The total OPEB liability increased one hundred and thirty seven thousand, again, that's just coming from the actual report. That we, that the city, uh, contracts those to do. So your net position was four point eight million, of which that four point eight million, three point eight million was unrestricted. So looking at the revenues a little bit, your changes in services decreased by a hundred and fifty four thousand, that's just. You know, the lower volume of, uh, planning fees, license fees, permit fees, nothing, nothing unusual there. Property tax increased ten percent, or two hundred and fifty three thousand from two point five to two point eight million. And those are just some of the financial highlights that you'll see in the report, I'm sorry, I'm kind of taking things out of order, because usually I go to the basic financial statements and then the other documents. Um, the second of the documents in your report packet is the memorandum on internal controls, now this is also known as the management letter. And that's my communication from this firm, my firm, to this governing body of things that we found in the audit. And they can be categorized in three ways, a material weakness, a significant deficiency, or other matter. And we do have a couple of things in material weaknesses that we wanted to bring to your attention. Um, one is the lateness of the treasury report being reviewed and approved by the city council, we, we looked during our interim testing, again, looking at those internal controls. And we noted that the January twenty twenty, uh, uh, three was not submitted until quite a bit late, or I'm sorry, the, um. The November was not submitted until January of twenty twenty three. And then the other one is the timeliness of bank reconciliations, we noted, um, we, we don't really. Audit, audit standards require us to see audit evidence, and when things aren't signed off or documented the date that it happened, we can't rely that it happened in a timely manner. So I'm not saying that the bank reconciliations are latent, I'm just saying that there has to be documentation on the bank reconciliations to say who prepared them. And what time, and who reviewed them and what time, and there was no, uh, documentation or audit trail on the, on the bank reconciliation. And then the rest is the other matters, and all we have in there is upcoming government accounting standards practice, or, uh, pronouncements that are coming down the pipeline. Nothing major in the next three years, so it should be pretty light in terms of changes. And then the last document you have is the required communication, and this is the requirement from statement of audit standards that we have to tell you. That we, um, we had no issues with management's accounting assumptions. So accounting assumptions could be fair market value investments, could be useful life of capital assets, and it actually also includes. All the assumptions in the, uh, pension and the other post employment benefit liability calculations. We had no issues with management's accounting assumptions, we had no difficulties in performing the audit. We don't think there was any kind of scope limitation, no disagreements with, uh, management. And we don't think that management was, um, in, in, you know, having another firm in the, uh, wings, just in case they didn't. Like the audit opinion that my firm rendered. And with that, I'd just like to thank Reynolds and Stephen for all their help, and, um, open it up to any questions you might have about the audit reports and the audit process.
Council member Turner?
Yes, I have, I have a few questions for you. Uh, I read, I kind of read this report, it's like eighty pages long, right?
Yes.
I, I, my questions are mostly focused on pages thirty four to thirty eight. And, of, of your handout, so, could you please explain? The city's net position given over time, is that a measure of financial health? And, and based on that, I see that our net position decreased by eight hundred and twenty thousand between. Fiscal year twenty two and twenty three, and that's almost twenty percent. So does this mean that last year we spent eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars more than we took in? Um, I thought we had counted a cash flow last year and added to our reserves. Am I reading this wrong?
No, and a lot of that has to do with the transfers in and out, um, there were some journal entries that were needed to help balance the funds amongst the equity accounts, and so that's really what it is. You see that in the transfers in and out.
Could you say what you said again?
Um, a lot of that, I believe, having technical issues on my side right now, but a lot of that. Has to do with the, um, transfers in and out, uh. And how that was recorded this year, sorry, did my camera go off?
Yes.
Oh, okay. But you can still hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay. Um. I might have to get back to you on that, because I'm having issues opening up the financials right now.
Okay, so if you could get back to me, I should really appreciate it. My, my next question has to do with OPEB. So, from what I understand, OPEB benefits are for nursing employees when they retire. Um, their post-retirement benefits, which doesn't include pension distribution, right? So in Montessorino's, OPEB increased by a hundred and thirty seven thousand. To eight hundred and forty three thousand. So does this mean we have an eight hundred and forty three thousand liability? Uh, it's just going again this year, twenty twenty four, and, and if so, by how much? Can you already answer this question, when we have to pay this? Um, when we have, what, we have had any discussion about liability? Uh. Could you make a comment on this, please?
Yeah, so the, the other post-employment benefits liability is under gas, government accounting standards board number seventy five, and that came out in twenty seventeen. And it requires us, um, I'm sorry, twenty, two thousand, two thousand. I'll have to double check on the date it came out, but it requires that now cities have to look out and see. The promises that they made employees in terms of their, uh, other post-employment benefits, that's health care. Um, vision, dental, those things have to be projected out based on not only the life of the, um, retiree. But also, we look at the current staff, um, that are active and even the current, uh. Non-active staff that are not yet drawing on those benefits and project out what those costs are going to be. And then bring those costs back into present value dollars. And that's the liability that goes on the books, and it's really not a, um, a budgeted amount. That should be budgeted for, it's really not amount that you'll ever actually, uh, pay in one lump sum. And it's, but what's not included in that is the actual current year payments of, uh, benefits. So really, the liability, the true liability of the annual cost of other post-employments is what, you know, the annual cost of what you pay for. Your employees and retirees, um, medical.
So do we, do we actually have an eight hundred and forty three thousand dollar liability?
You do on the book, on, on, on the entity wide financials, um, the statement of net position, yes, there is a liability there, but at the fund level. On the governmental balance sheet, it's not shown, because it's not a current liability in terms of that would ever be paid in the.
On the balance sheet?
So it shows. Yeah, it shows up on the, on the statement of net position, the, the, of the entity wide balance sheet, but not on the fund level, because it's not a current use of resources. And, and this liability every, every, uh, couple of years gets reviewed by an actuary, where they looked at what the. The next level of, you know, how long the current, uh, retirees, how long the current, uh, active are gonna. Need those benefits, when they're gonna retire, when they start tapping into those, and what that cost is, and then again, bring it back to current year dollars.
Okay, um, if you don't want to have a few more questions.
Yeah.
One of those to do with deferred outflows and deferred inflows relating to O P E D. Can you? What?
No, I, I'm sorry, go ahead. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
I'm sorry?
Oh, sorry, go ahead and finish your question.
Okay, so related to pensions and O P E D, we have outflows of one point five million. And it grew by almost five hundred thousand since FY twenty two. And there are referred, or there are deferred inflows of almost eight hundred and fifty thousand. Where do these inflows come from? And do they offset the outflows?
So do we? Yeah.
Any expense category that grows by five hundred thousand in a single year? The council should, attention should be brought to it.
Right, and that's the thing about Gatsby seventy five and the pension Gatsby sixty eight is it requires you to put this. I wouldn't, I'm not gonna call like a fictitious number, but it has to be, it's a, it's a projection out of what these liabilities would cost if the city ceased operation today. I'm sorry, as of June thirty twenty twenty three, what would be the projected amount that they would have to put aside to pay for those future benefits that they promised people as of? June thirty twenty twenty three. So as part of that, you have the pension piece, the liability that goes on the books, and you have the other post-employment. And then you have to, um, there's this deferred inflows and outflows that are uses of resources and future expenditures of resources. For both pension and life and O P E D. And then. Once those are all booked and the liability is booked, there's an expense book to those changes. And we get that all from CalPERS and we get that all from your Gatsby seventy five actuarial and. Um, we test the, the validity, you know, so you're not using a long-term rate of return of like, you know, ten percent. So it's reasonable, you know, we're, we're looking at the COLA calculation by the actuaries to make sure that's reasonable. We're looking at the. Um, projected salary increases to make sure that's reasonable. And without getting, I mean, that's, that's kind of the way we as auditors have to do it. And it's, it's every city and special district in the United States in Canada that has to follow this stream.
Okay, um, I have another question on compensated absence. Um, example would be sick leave, holiday, vacation and grand jury time for, for employees. Um, this almost doubled to seventy five thousand in the, for fiscal year twenty three. This plus pension O P E D generated one point one million liability for us. In fiscal year twenty three, is this correct?
Yep, definitely. And the biggest swing of that, I would, I would say is the. The net pension liability that was a uh, an asset of eight hundred and forty thousand, I believe, last year, and now it's a liability of a hundred and eighty eight thousand. So that, there's about a million swing.
Yeah, I would suggest bring it, bring this up, so we don't see it here one night. Um. Um, I have one more question. Uh, on page thirty six. It says that we spent six million dollars in fiscal year twenty three. That is up by one million from fiscal year twenty two. This is expenses for public safety, public works. And community development all decreased in fiscal year twenty three. But our spending for general government exploded. From one point nine million to four point five million. So what happened?
If you're, again, I can't get to the report for some reason, but Re- Reynolds, can you maybe look at that? I think that's in the management discussion analysis.
What we're looking here is a hundred and thirty seven percent increase in general government expenses. I believe that the council should be made aware of this deficits. Sooner than later, so we can make this part of our budget cycle, right? This should be top of mind for all of us.
Oh, I agree. I mean. Uh, unfortunately, a lot of this time when we get these, in, when I see these end results is when we do our final audit at the year end. Um, for like the pension and the other post-employment benefits, I don't, I don't see them throughout the year.
Four point five million is a lot of money for Monteserino.
All right, any further questions, Councilor?
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I'll just. Make a statement that uh I had not. Review these financial statements uh for the year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty three. They're almost a year old. And um, I'm going to be abstaining. Uh, from any motion to approve this.
Right. I'm with Stu, uh, any questions? No?
Yeah, I, I, I really wanted to be clear on something. I'll never turn and ask some very precise questions. But I really want to understand our budget. I mean, are we off by eight hundred thousand here and a million there or five million here? Or is the budget that they presented? Or, or are these pension-related items something that just kind of sitting out there, but it's not something we need to worry about as you do our. Planning based on our existing financial situation?
Correct, um, the pension liability and the other post-employment liability, those, those um. Those earmarked funds or those dollar amounts of what is owed to employees has always been there. It just wasn't ever on the face of the financials until Gatsby sixty eight and seventy five came into play. They were always in the back in the supplemental, but they were brought forward when those two um pronouncements were implemented. And there's nothing really you can do to. Other than like funding them in advance or doing things like that that you can do to kind of predict where they go. I mean, over the past five years. With the change in the markets, um, the change in the cost of healthcare. Uh, those numbers have been fluctuated so much that in like in twenty twenty two. The pension side swung to an asset for a minute, and that was the most difficult thing to explain to a lot of um of my clients is because. It's because the market swung. And the deferred inflows and outflows were supposed to smooth out those market conditions. That are caught, those swings in the, the liability due to market conditions, due to changes in um. Uh, changes in benefits. Did not work and it caused the liability to turn into an asset for. A small year. So unless the market swings again, um, we should be pretty consistent going forward.
Yeah, so thank you for that explanation. I guess I really tried to get to a bottom number. I mean, should we assume, let's say, we, our, our bank says we have five million or six million in the bank right now? Uh, should we assume that really that uh liability that's out for the pension? Affects that six million, so if there's a one million pension liability or. Uh, some, one sort of, that we really only have five million in the bank, or can we make decisions? Concerning spending based on having six million in the bank? Well, yeah, are we, are we supposed to say, okay, that one million that is a potential liability is going to be covered by future income that the city gets? So we don't need to budget for it right now or reserve separately for that? Or should we just say, no, we need to reserve another billion and set it aside or do something with it?
So two parts there. The, the cash and bank and investments that you have is not affected by the other post-employment um liability, the O P E D liability or the pension liability at all. In your current budget environment, the only thing you need to budget for in terms of pension and. O P E D are what your one, you know, your current year payment for those benefits are. That's it. It has nothing to do with the total amount of the, the total liability for either one.
All right, so I guess that gets me a question, Raymond. Do you have the number for our current year uh budget is for pension retirement? Is that budget, uh, you put that in in the proposed budget?
No, we just have the amount that uh. CalPERS and Pepper charges us for current employees' retirement.
Right, that's, that's, I think that's what he's talking about.
Yeah, yep, that is it.
Yeah, that's, that's what he's talking about, that you should have what you just made charge for active employees right now. And not anything else that you're looking for the numbers.
Yeah, this year, for example, um, we're. Well, for, for O P E D, that's, uh, we pay as we go on that. So, but for the. A retirement component, U A L, for example, this, this year it was sixteen thousand.
Okay, so that's all we need to budget then, okay, what, what our exposure is, not the five million or whatever else number might come up for. Every retiree that will retire eventually and. Retire to medical and other benefits.
Yeah, so, yeah, for, again, for U A L, that's what they charge, that's what CalPERS charged us.
Okay, so, so, so I'm gonna make a statement here.
Well, we're still, we're still doing questions.
Questions.
I think, um, I have a question to ask. It's good. So I, these are real liabilities, right? And, and I think we're paying it out um in the future and over time. Uh, so is CalPERS? The losses on CalPERS on investment are of this? Is that why we have the five hundred and forty one thousand um bill that we have from CalPERS?
Um. David, is that the, the true response? I mean, usually investments. Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, so the, the, the net pension liability is a net number. So you have your assets held. In your fiduciary net position, so that's the asset held in trust. And then you have that total O P E D or total pension liability. That's the cost of what they think. The, the retirees' benefits over their lifetime. Um, current and uh. And future retirees will cost. And so the net of those two numbers, the assets. Minus the liabilities is your net pension liability. So if those assets drop. Based on losses, then yes, your liability will increase.
So is, is the moral of the story then? We don't have as much money as we think we do? What's up our liability?
It's, it's really not about money in terms of. Think of it, it's almost like a depreciation. Where depreciation is not true money going out the door. Um, it's purely just kind of like spreading out the cost of the capital assets purchased in one year over its useful life. This is the same thing. This number is always going to be projected out. To what the cost is going to be um for city retirees. And it's never, unless the city ceases to exist, it'll never need it to be paid in one lump sum. And so long as you continue to pay what CalPERS uh and is saying for that. Then that's the best you can do unless you really want to go down a uh, uh, the path of trying to. Pre-fund this because you think you can get a better rate somewhere else. Um. That's, that's kind of the option, the options that I see other cities do.
All right, you have a question also.
Hi, um. My first question is, I'm looking at the notes to the financial statements uh and. Do you prepare the financial state, the notes to the financial statements, or does our uh finance director do those?
So we take the raw trial balance information, we dump it into our uh audit software that already has the mapping. You know, that the. The Wells Fargo, all four will, or how many of our Wells Fargo accounts in the trial balance roll up into that cash and investment number? And that populates the financials themselves. The notes to the financials we draft in Word. And then when we are presenting the drafts to uh the city. Um, for review and to write the M D N A and to approve. And at the very end, uh, the last approval we get is the management representation letter, and that's signed by management saying that they accept the financials. That they have not withheld any information from us, that they have not um. Uh, missed any disclosures, that we have not missed any disclosure.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to draw your attention to note eleven, participation in joint powers authorities.
Yes.
What page is that? It's note eleven. So at the bottom of the page that I'm looking on, it's thirty five, but on the right-hand side, it's page two oh one of two twenty three.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm not, I, it's page thirty five in the City Monte Sereno Notes to Financial Statements, June thirtieth, twenty twenty three. Um, in note eleven, it mentions West Valley Solid Waste Management Authority. And the uh. The other one is S V A C A. Which is Silicon Valley Animal Control Services. And I know that in prior years, we had the same note in the financial statements. And I believe that we're a member of other joint power authorities such as West Valley Clean Water Authority. And Silicon Valley Clean Energy uh Authority. Um, that, so that's a statement. My question is, should those uh J P As be listed in the notes to the financial statements in note eleven?
Uh, I would have to see how much, you know. If, if the contributions and the involvement is material, uh, it's my understanding that they were not for those ones, but. That's something I can review with uh Reynolds about and Stephen to see if that's something that wants to be added to this uh. It's kind of a commitments and contingencies note.
And you can add the city's association for next year. We're, like, that's, that's the J P. This for Raymond.
Yeah, we, we can incorporate that in the next version of the draft or the report.
And further questions? No.
I, I, I would really like to get possibly a miniature sample on these things. So he hasn't had a chance to review it. Would prefer to continue it till he's had a chance to do it and talk about it. I don't know how you feel about it, but.
Well, I, I will come out and say these, these financial statements are for June thirtieth. Twenty twenty three. And uh, you know, we're almost at June thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Uh, I believe that. Uh, our auditor has expressed an opinion on these financial statements. Saying that they're uh correct in all material respects and. I can only agree with that since that's his opinion. Um, but I think going forward, it's a different story.
And what, how do we get your input on what that different story is?
Well, I guess that's having some involvement. Um, we are, we do have a. Uh, what we call the uh finance committee, but then we changed the name of it and what its, its purpose was. Um, but I, I think when we have our comments on the discussion, we should leverage, the city of Monte Sereno should leverage volunteers within the city. Such as what I would do, uh. You know, because. You know, we just don't have that expertise ourselves.
Right, um, I, actually, I do have a one question. Um, there were two findings in the audit reports. Um, how serious would you consider these, these two findings and? Sort of a, a selected question to that is. Are you seeing similar things in other very small cities or organizations?
So yes, and. Okay, so regarding the bank reconciliation. And the timeliness and, and documentation of the re, uh, the preparation and review. That is definitely um something I'm seeming, seeing more common now. There's a, a lack of uh. Uh, finance people in the governmental realm right now, and people are definitely trying to do. More with less finance staff. So I've got many of my clients that are behind. In timeliness and review of the bank reconciliation. In terms of the treasures report, that's really kind of a compliance thing where your investment policy requires that a treasury report goes to. The city council within a certain amount of time. Um, usually between thirty and thirty or forty-five days. And so de- depending on the time and nature of when the council meetings happen. But that is something that also I've seen pretty common across the board, that people are behind in terms of issuing those uh documents to the governing body. But that is something that also I've seen pretty common across the board, that people are behind in terms of issuing those documents to the governing body.
All right. Thank you. Any further questions on this? No, uh we need to vote for this for public comment. Is there anybody in chambers here which should comment on this item? I'm seeing none. Is there anybody online? Please raise your first hand.
No, we have the rights.
Have you gone? Council, any further discussion before we potentially vote on approving or accepting this report? Now, is there a motion? I made a motion that we accept the report. There are second. I will second that. When you put all all votes, please.
Councilmember Mecha Chuck?
Abstain.
Councilmember Lawheen?
Abstain.
Councilmember Turner? Abstain. I I I also want to let let me bring up something here. These are real liabilities, right? So sooner or later, we're gonna have to pay them. So just think about that. So I'll abstain.
That's what this is about. This is about accepting or not the audit report. There's nothing we can do about CalPERS.
Vice Mayor Craig?
Yes.
And Mayor Wollcherner?
Yes.
Motion for it.
Okay, so the audit report is audit report has not been accepted.
Yeah, I don't know what to go for. Yeah, I would suggest we continue this matter for that hopefully getting a constant number of checks from the comments on it.
Can you speak louder?
I I I would suggest we continue this matter, but I I don't think the order is that important. I guess you you have to make a second appearance or you repeat it all. It's just our understanding of what's going on here that we need more clarification on.
Yeah, I I I don't think it's his fault.
No, it's not his fault.
Well, could I make a suggestion then that we probably get a re-education of what CalPERS is really all about because a lot of the questions that I've heard tonight, I think it's a misunderstanding or just not understanding at all the complexities of accounting for the numbers, the way that CalPERS has asked the cities to do it now that they've made some some major changes, which which as the auditor said, moved things from footnotes to the front and it makes sure reports look absolutely horrible. But again, we're talking about if the city were to fold and become part of those shadows tomorrow, that's what the liability is. These numbers are always going to exist, just like housing elements numbers. They're they're there and we're going to try to make the best of them. But um I guess the thing is is that we're talking about continuing this. I mean, are we asking Councilmember Mecha Chuck to come in and and do a full audit similar to what the to what we just paid to have an auditor do? I I I see you shaking your head.
I may I make a.
Sure, sure. So at the beginning of my career, way back in the early eighties, um pensions were an issue back then, and everyone saw back then that pensions were going to become more and more of an issue as the baby boomer bubble moved through and matured. And what we're doing now is we're actually seeing it. And when you look at other cities uh like San Jose in particular, and when you've got a large enforcement body, which we do not have, like police and fire, um the pension liability is becoming more and more real. Having said that, the other change is in the is in G A S B, which is Government Accounting Standards Board. And they were the ones not not CalPERS that asked that that required the liability to move from footnote disclosure to balance sheet disclosure. All of this has been here for years and it's just in a different place now. That's not what my issue is. I have other issues. And they relate to internal controls or the lack thereof.
Right.
And um I have yeah, I will our auditor, who is a licensed C P A firm, has expressed an opinion that these financial statements are free of material error. And I'm abstaining from that, but it has nothing to do with the pension accounting or anything else. And it doesn't have to do with the audit of the of the year-end balances. I believe that they are in fact, you know, free of material misstatement. Okay, and and I understand that. And I guess what I was trying to say is that we've now been given an audit statement. And by not accepting it, or I I guess if we were to accept it, we now know what we need to work on. By not accepting it, we're saying we need to have another audit statement, but we don't know what we need to work on yet because now we want the actual audit statement to be changed. But is it really materially going to change or do we accept it? And we look at it and we fix the stuff that's in there today. And I get that's the point that I was trying to make.
And and I completely agree with that. Um we can do another audit. We can pay another auditor to do the audit over and then they'll look at the same report and pay for the same report twice. I think by rejecting this report, we are achieving exactly nothing.
Okay, then what I'd like to do is take what Councilmember Turner is saying, and I'm now going to make a motion that we accept the report based on the comments that we just made. That's the report is so that we can know where the deficiencies are, go forth and fix them, but that we agree with the report and the report is factually correct.
Yes, and that falls within the the purview of the finance committee to address these issues together with staff. Rejecting the audit report doesn't fix anything. So I'd like to call for a revoke.
No, wait a minute. I made a motion now.
Get a motion. So is there a.
Second, and we have a second.
I I just want to make a comment. So you said something about the finance committee. So I'm going to make sure that there is a likely finance committee that can really look at this stuff.
Well, I'd like to make a comment on the finance committee. We've we have a finance committee, but we haven't had a single meeting.
So how how can we direct the finance committee to have a meeting?
We should ask the chair of finance committee to organize a meeting so we can discuss these issues.
Director, council should direct. So that part of the motion also directs the chair of the finance committee to have a meeting, review it, and maybe come up with if 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 the chair agrees, because obviously.
So technically, we have a motion, a second on this, so we should go around that. And then we can talk about the finance committee, or you can withdraw your motion, your second, we just start over.
That would be part of an amendment that you would make a motion that would propose.
Okay, so let me tell you that we um so every year we have to re-establish our ad hoc committees, and they have to be for a limited scope and a limited duration. So we did it again this year. This is what your um finance committee does. Review the city's proposed two-year budget transition, review proposals for replacing the city's financial reporting system and make a recommendation to the city council, review the proposed improvements to monthly close process and review proposed internal controls and financial reporting. I think those last two items are areas of concern that don't necessarily relate to the audit, but are issues that the ad hoc committee could work on that might address some of the concerns that we've heard tonight.
Does that go where everything the the finance committee should do, or is there something additional we need to add and to that?
I'm gonna choose my words very carefully. And in doing so, I think there's some items that have come to my attention through the audit for the year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty three, that could change that this the scope of that ad hoc committee. I'm not sure how we would change the scope mid-year.
We could, we could. It would have to be an agenda. But yeah, we could, we could um make recommendations to modify it. On there, it includes reviewing the city's proposed two-year two-year budget transition, which is in effect happened or is happening over this next month. So we can modify the scope of the ad hoc committee um at any time. But.
All right, so that'll be a future item then to come to bring back as to defining the redefining scope of the finance committee. And also making sure you guys mean it.
And we just have to be careful because last year it included, I think, some things related to the audit. I'll have to go back and look at it, but it can't be for the purpose that we had last year. It has to be a new purpose. So we can work.
You can add to the same.
You can add to it, but you can't add to it things that you did before. So we can work on it with Councilmember.
So procedurally, how do we go ahead? I need motions. You'd be.
So you have a motion and you have a second. So I'm sorry, can you repeat your motion?
My motion was for us to accept the audit report. And we would take into account some of the comments that were made during the discussion tonight.
Was it satisfied?
Yeah, so can we all roll home over?
Yes. Councilmember Turner? Yes. Councilmember Mecha?
Abstain.
Councilmember Alahin?
All right.
Vice Mayor Craig?
Yes.
Mayor Wollcherner?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you for all your work there on the audit. Appreciate that.
Great, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
All right, um. Just.
I have a quick question to our city clerk.
Go ahead.
There are no members of the youth commission online or anything, so we don't have to move that agenda either. So unless we just wanted to get it done with and take the rest of the meeting to discuss the budget.
Yeah, and we were um social justice award.
Is that person not on either? Okay, then it doesn't matter. Why don't we expect to look they were.
Okay. Um continue well with um this next item number seven. Study section number two, fiscal year twenty four to twenty twenty six, the goals project. Do you have an updated staff report on this?
Excited. Yes, I do. Being in Loisey, do I have control over?
I didn't accept your creator.
Maybe we should. We have a short brief break before we. Or three minutes of research.
Because it goes long.
Can I break?
Yeah.
Can I use this?
Thank you, Mayor. And Loisey? You've been allowing me to share my screen.
Go ahead and accept, um, your promotion to analyst. There you go. You'll be able to share it between them then.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council. Please to, um, present the second study session of our fiscal year two thousand twenty five, twenty six budget. First page, just a top line summary of revenues. FY two thousand twenty five proposed budget revenues five point eight.
Progress.
Versus five point eight million in the FY two thousand twenty four midyear budget. Operating general revenues of four point eight versus four point seven in the two thousand twenty four midyear budget. Twenty one million or two point six percent higher versus last year. This increase was primarily driven by higher property taxes expenditures. Now, this this component here is just addressing the, um, the general fund budget for for the city. Uh, total, um, FY twenty four, twenty five proposed budget expenditure seven point two versus six point two million in the FY twenty twenty four midyear budget. Operating general expenditures four point seven versus four point five in the two versus the two twenty four, uh, midyear budget. Point three million increase or six percent increase. This increase was driven by higher salaries, staff, staff salaries and benefits. Structural surplus on the general fund is approximately eighty seven thousand.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Uh, is this, is this, um, up to March? Year to date, this is still the same, but you don't have it in your.
No, the, um, so referencing the next, uh, page, let me make this a little bigger.
You see it on where the number two is, there's a little plus sign. You can click on it and it'll expand it.
Um, there it is.
Right there. There you go.
So this is strictly comparing, um, so I'm citing columns B versus columns E and column H is the delta. So column B represents the general fund for the city. Two thousand twenty four midyear budget. Column E represents the general fund for forecast for proposed budget two thousand twenty five. So I'm looking at the significant, uh, uh, increases. It's really related to the property tax. I went back from our last meeting, uh, session one. I went back and started from a starting base of what the actual property taxes will be based on the assessors' report. And I increased it by five percent. Giving us a net total of one hundred forty one thousand in additional tax revenues. Permits and licensing. License and permit fees went up six point seven percent. And that's primarily related to, so when I start my comments here. Yes, primarily related to, um, general permits, uh, going up. Let's see, the other significant item. Franchise taxes, that's also going up about thirty three percent or seven point five percent. Given that, um, our utility companies, our Comcast and butter company are raising their rates and as such, um, our franchise tax fees are are based on the revenues that they collect.
We, uh. What do we want to call him to go through the whole presentation and hold the questions until he's done? Or do we want to ask questions during the presentation? I'm fine with either one, we just need to decide what goes to do.
Yeah, I, 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 I'm gonna ask a question that's specifically related to the light item being on.
Okay.
So it'll be easier, but a general question is probably.
I think that's better, too.
Yeah, okay, go ahead.
So, so the licensed permits is what you're talking about? And we increase it by six point seven percent based on the additional permit application you think you're gonna get?
Yes.
And does that include the two and a half percent?
It does not.
It does not.
It does not.
That number would change, that would go up by.
Two point six percent.
Of something, so. Uh, whatever that is, all right. Okay, that's my question. Thanks.
I have a question. One of the same. You, you have year to date, actuals. Is that still until the end of March? Because you don't have it up there anymore.
No, I'm just showing a comparison between our midyear budget, which is a full year forecast versus a full year two thousand twenty five, uh, proposed budget. So there's no number showing, um, March here today on the slides. So intercompany, intergovernmental, um, is down forty four thousand. That's based on the cops, uh, E L E A S, uh, pass through grant that we receive and we pass that through to our police department. Uh, in in the budget, we traditionally budgeted for a hundred thousand. But this year or the midyear budget, uh, it's actually a hundred fifty plus. And so we brought it down to the hundred thousand. Other revenues, we expect the lower road impact fees to under twenty five thousand. Uh, storm drain development fees to fifteen thousand. And we already received a sixty five thousand dollar grant in fiscal year two thousand twenty four, which accounts for that, uh, difference.
I forget a clarification. You're giving out numbers, I, I'm not seeing them on the sheet. I mean, missing them? What column are those in?
Oh, okay, so I'm referencing, I'm comparing columns B against column E, which is the twenty five, two thousand twenty five proposed budget.
Where's the hundred and twenty five thousand number you just wrote out?
Oh, that's just, that's just a summary of the, the three components.
We lost me. One three.
So, so the delta here is forty four thousand.
Correct.
And that comes from, um, in fiscal year twenty four. We collected a sixty five thousand dollar, um, leap grant.
Okay, yeah, I got that one. So that's.
So that's, so that's not in there. And then what's included in the net forty four is, uh, we expect lower road impact fees to a hundred twenty, to a hundred twenty five. And then, um, it lowers storm drain development fees to one fifteen.
All right.
See, another major one, other revenues.
So where are you now?
I'm looking at, um, the row. Um, other revenues.
Okay.
So other revenue sets primarily driven by lower expected road impact fees to a hundred twenty five thousand. So total revenues again for just the operating fund, general fund for the city is going from four point seven million to four point eight million, an increase of two point six. That's just a little bit of narrative on those very. On the expenditure side. Again, comparing. Yes.
Oh, can can.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Um, you the federal relief fund. It looks like we have received almost four hundred ten thousand. So is that included in this?
Yeah, that.
In columns C, ten twenty year old thing, we budgeted seven hundred thirty eight thousand this year. Right?
Yes.
So six hundred ninety eight of that is the community center grants, forty K online permitting system. How much do we actually expect to receive this year? Is it just forty thousand?
Well, the five hundred thousand dollar grant, as you know, is a reimbursable type grant. We spend the money and then we seek reimbursement.
Okay.
And then there's the prop sixty eight.
Right.
Which is included in there. Again, that's also another reimbursable grant. We applied for reimbursement. And then the balance, I believe it's eighteen thousand is also a reimbursable grant.
Okay.
So I I expect that we would be able to collect on that once we submit our request for reimbursement. Any more questions on the revenue side?
We're just finishing the revenue.
Yes.
So when I look at column A and versus column B, the in column A, we've got two seven seven one nine ninety. And then it increases in twenty three to twenty four to two eight forty nine. That's only a two point seven increase. And now we're looking at going for from the two eight forty nine to two nine ninety. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So in column H, the increase is a hundred and forty one K, which is and beside it, it says five point nine percent.
Five percent.
Oh, sorry, I drew drew a line through the five percent. So our increase from twenty three, June thirty twenty 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 three to twenty twenty four was two point seven. Now we're forecasting five percent.
That's correct. And that's based on in the narrative.
Yes.
On the next page. It's this is the table that I pulled from the assessor's office that shows what the real property growth rates have been for that period of time. So for example, we can read that. Two thousand twenty four, twenty five, they're looking at four point seven five percent growth in twenty twenty three, twenty four, it was eight point nine. Glasses. Oh, thank you, Steve. Eight point two nine.
And one is sworn to have the highest property debt decrease. In the assessment report, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, usually it's according to assessor's office, the increase actually takes effect a year later. So for example, in this case, I'm expecting the increase to be anywhere between four point seven five percent versus an eight point two nine. I think it would be closer to the eight point two nine, given that that was prior fiscal year assessment. But that's really the basis for my recommendation of increasing it by five percent. Sort of a okay, midway. Going to expenditures, again, looking at the general fund for the city. Personnel costs have increased. Again, that's based on the MOU.
You're reading the columns.
Oh, I'm sorry. We're comparing column B to column E and the delta is column H.
Thank you.
So the personnel, what's changed there versus this fiscal year is we have one staff person that's going from part time to full time. Plus, it includes an increase in workers' comp because that person's been reclassified as more of a labor type person. As well as updates based on the MOU, four four percent salary increases and increase in slight increase in benefits, the the twelve hundred health allowance increase ever so slightly. But still, it's material in this case.
So can I ask about the administration cost? So we budgeted four hundred and fifty nine thousand. And yet we've already spent seven hundred thirty two?
No, that again, column A is fiscal year two thousand twenty three, which is last year.
Yeah.
This fiscal year, we have budgeted four fifty eight in the latest midyear budget.
So we're proposing to spend six hundred thirteen thousand next year?
Yes.
That's for the hard time and full time?
No, that includes, let's see.
I mean, is there a better way that we can control this? Because it's pretty hard.
So the illustration.
And then expression.
Look at your video.
Just wondering here. That's primarily driven by.
Here. Here.
Engineer Public Works Consultant plus one one twenty. And plan check building official increasing by twenty four thousand. Other major item, let's see, construction. It's actually gone down. You know, this year we did the kitchen remodel. And we're not planning to have something like that.
So that's building maintenance.
It's construction.
Construction.
Oh, now we're backed up.
Yeah.
Okay, so so I have a similar question for a general government. You're spending four hundred seventy seven thousand this year. And proposing to spend five hundred fifty three next year. What is what is included in this?
Well, in this one, let's see.
And how can we better control this? Because this is.
Where do you get five fifty? I've got four forty seven.
Column G, line four.
Okay, you don't need to. Yeah, column. So we're looking at column B. Again, we're comparing column B against column E. This is just the general fund. So the general government, we're actually going down thirty seven thousand versus the this fiscal year's midyear budget.
Column B versus column E.
Yeah, but then column G is going in now.
So I'm comparing, again, I'm just showing you the the general, we're comparing the general fund from fiscal year twenty four to fiscal year twenty five.
So so what's the difference between E and G?
E and G, well. Column F includes the nonrecurring projects like the the building projects, the street projects, some of the projects that that general staff will are recommending. So I separate this to show to show that the city is running, I guess the bottom line number here, that the city is running on a structural surplus of eighty seven thousand. And so if you go to the bottom line of column E, which simply put is the expected recurring revenues that the city will receive minus the expected recurring expenses to run the city. And so the difference between that is eighty seven thousand in surplus.
Okay, so so if you look at maintenance, for example, right? We have spent six hundred thousand. And we're planning to spend six hundred thousand again next year? For the payment improvement program?
Well, let's see, six hundred thousand. Well, that's total again. I'm gonna address that component separately because I'm focusing on the general budget for the city. That's why I'm that's why.
Column B right now.
Yeah, I'm comparing columns B and E.
We're gonna talk about G later.
Yeah, we're gonna talk about. Yeah, it's basically it's column C and F, but for now, I'm just focusing on the general budget for the city.
Okay, so we'll talk about G later on?
Yes.
Okay.
G is the special one time projects.
Yeah, G includes, G is a sum of of columns E, which is general budget, column F are represents the projects that we can consider to do or not. So it's projects that's not required for the city to continue on a regular basis. But rather, it's a choice that council can make to see if those type of expenses or projects are have priority.
Those are basically capital improvement, though.
Yes.
That you're heading in.
Yes, it's the building project, it's the street projects, it's the finance project and the the paint project of the city hall. But I'll show that as we go down, I wanted to show you that based on column E, which again is just simply the general fund for the city. We're operating now at, we're projecting an eighty seven thousand surplus. In our fiscal year, this fiscal year, we're projecting a two hundred thirty five thousand surplus. And I believe in fiscal year two thousand twenty three, it was a little over three hundred thousand.
So can I ask a question then? The the city attorney's fees. We will discuss what else goes in there later?
Well, the city attorney fee is simply the retainer that we pay our city attorney plus I added ten thousand for miscellaneous hours that might go over. I didn't include any extra expenses for other potential litigation matters. That's strictly the retainer.
So obviously, you've got all expenditures. We expect to they're all in there somewhere.
Yes. This is the summary of the total groupings of those categories.
So the monthly retirement pension accounts that we need to win, is that already put into the personnel?
Yes, that's part of personnel. But again, that doesn't include, if you look at column F, that's again, nonrecurring decisions that the city needs to make on, you know, whether we want to pay for that five hundred forty one thousand. That's again, not a it's a non, it's a nonrecurring event.
It's it's not due right now.
It's not included in column E.
Is it due at table now?
I'm sorry.
Are you required to pay it as soon as it comes up or what?
No, you have you have three choices and I can show you those choices here and in the report. But basically, what I want to the emphasis that I'm showing here is just to demonstrate that, look, based on the the known recurring revenues that the city receives and the known expenses that we have to operate the sea. We end up with eighty seven thousand projected surplus.
May I ask question about equipment, equipment and improvement?
Okay.
In your notes, this is for the truck, right?
Uh, that's correct.
So it's a brand new truck. Um, doesn't it have a three year warranty to have the maintenance? Most of its mileage should be seventeen miles of Broadway in Montesereno. How did we get such a significant expense in that? Seventy five thousand two hundred fifty nine.
Seventy five thousand equipment improvements.
You mean Tesla, didn't we?
That would have been cheaper.
Huh?
That would have been cheaper.
Yeah. Say I need new glasses. It'll make the numbers bigger. I'm sorry, Rina, your question was on building and improvements?
No, equipment and.
Oh.
So in your notes, you said this is primarily for the maintenance?
Oh, no, that's. Yeah, it's higher software licensing costs and city front maintenance costs. I mean, we didn't have any maintenance costs for any truck last fiscal year. I mean, it was this fiscal year.
So this is all for for maintenance? This is all for software licensing?
Yes, I mean, we've been adding lights, new software to the organization.
Truck?
No.
No?
No, for the seventy five thousand financial software.
For different software that the city uses to run their operations.
So so this is not all the truck?
No.
Oh, okay.
It's it's primarily licensing fees for software along with.
Okay, I thought it was just for the truck.
No, regular routine maintenance on the truck. I mean, that's a small component.
Yeah.
But the big piece is really the the software licensing fees.
Can you make that as every like like a software licensing so we know?
Yeah.
What that is.
Any more questions on this? So going to the next page.
This is on the expenses, right?
Yes.
I thought in our last budget study session, I had asked to see FTE numbers for both employees and contractors.
I put that in the notes on the narrative. Yeah. So in the narrative on the next page, I'm showing FTE in fiscal year two thousand twenty four, this year. It was eight for full time employees and two part time. Next year, we're going to nine full time and then one part time for both fiscal year twenty five and twenty six.
So are there plans to hire more people? I mean, I thought the council was supposed to approve any new hires. I don't I don't think we've approved.
Well, that's not new hires. It's converting one person from part time status to full time.
Right, these aren't FTE. The part time isn't FTE equivalents.
Yes.
What you're saying is you're adding a half an FTE.
Yes.
Yeah. Because it's it's ten employees from ten to ten, but someone's gonna get paid, they're gonna work twice as much from half time to full time.
That's right.
So eight point five or nine point five.
Oh, so I laid it there is FTE, there's eight employees. And next fiscal year, nine employees as well as two thousand. And next fiscal year, nine employees, as well as two thousand twenty six. For part-time, it's two employees. And then next year it's one, so.
I get it, my my point is.
To show it as.
To show it as an FTE, full-time equivalent position. That's all.
Okay.
Okay, so so are you, are we done with revenue and expenses there?
Let let me get there by all this.
Yeah.
FTE, so do we have eight FTEs and that's it? Or do you have eight FTEs plus two part-times?
Yes, this year, yeah, this this fiscal year, we have eight uh full-time employees. And two part-time employees.
And next year, we're supposed to have nine full-time and one part-time.
Yes, we're basically converting the one person that's part-time to a full-time.
So we have nine full-time employees in a sense, and next year we'll have nine full-time.
This fiscal year, we have eight full-time employees.
It's like, no, we have nine, but there's two part-times. So FTE, do we have nine?
I guess I'm using the definition of FTE differently.
Right, it's full-time equivalent.
Okay.
So two part-times, you go to one full-time.
One half plus one half, right?
Yeah, well, from nine to nine and a half.
So nine to nine and a half, this one's out, okay.
A total same number of employees.
So this buil- building and improvement, that twelve seventy seven is community center?
Well.
Under C?
Well, again, I haven't gotten to C and F, that's later on in the presentation. What I want to focus here on was just the column Bs and E. Because I I just want to address the uh general fund for running city hall.
All right. So is everybody, anybody have any other questions about expenses or revenues? Where are recurring? If not, we can move on.
Okay.
Non-recurring stuff.
Thank you, Mayor. So now I'm gonna go to the. The projects that are considered, um so as the. As an offshoot from the last slide, column E is the general fund budget.
Okay, so excuse me, so you're going back to the first page now?
No, I'm in sequence of that um of that presentation, now I'm going beyond the um. I guess.
But we're.
Yeah, I'm.
Maybe we should have secondarily numbered these pages one day.
It looks like that.
All right.
So if you go in sequence.
Okay, I'm I'm there.
So this, now, what I'm gonna address here is columns F through U.
Column what?
F, like Frank, through column U. So this represents all the non-recurring projects that the city is proposing. So this particular slide here shows all the source funding. That staff has identified to support these various projects, projects K through T. I'm sorry, K through U. So for example, the first project is finance and accounting systems improvement project. The next one is uh the flock cameras. Column M is city hall maintenance project, that's the exterior painting. Column O is the unfunded accrued liabilities. Column P is the general plan revised project. Q is community center building. R is the uh green stormwater infrastructure project, basically, it's a parking lot here. Uh S represents the annual payment management program, uh the bucket works area. And then finally, the capital improvement project for Davies, Dave's Avenue Safety Improvement. So this first slide shows all the revenue sources identified um by project. And then the next page shows what the projected expenses are. Related to those respective uh projects, so for example, looking at column K. We identified that that project would cost city twenty five thousand, it's a consultant. And so uh the bottom line there where it says net surplus slash deficit. That is the money that would be drawn from our reserves to pay for that project. You see how um how this spreadsheet is organized? And so column L shows that that project, the flock cameras, will cost the city uh fifty thousand. And so there were no funding sources for that, so that we would have to draw from our reserves fifty thousand. The next one is the city hall maintenance project, which is uh exterior painting, estimated twenty five thousand. The unfunded, unfunded accrued liabilities. Uh total of five hundred forty one thousand, again, being drawn from our reserves. General plan revision, that totals eighty seven thousand uh six hundred. There was no funding identified for that, so that again will come out of our reserves. Uh community center building, it's uh one point two million. We've identified some funding sources, so the net draw from our reserves would be five hundred four thousand. The green storm drain, storm water infrastructure project, a hundred twenty five thousand. No funding identified there, so it would be drawn from our reserves, a hundred twenty five thousand. The annual payment management program uh for the streets. Now, four hundred thousand is the expense, we have identified some funding sources for that. So the net draw from our reserves would be a hundred sixty two thousand. And then finally, Dave's Avenue Safety Improvement, um no funding sources. Actually, there was a a funding source identified, uh cost of that project is sixty thousand. The net draw from that particular project is thirty five. So the way. I'm showing this, uh if if the city were to consider uh adopting all these projects. Then you look at column F. That summarizes the draw that we would need to make against our reserves of one point six million. If we were to do all those projects. So how that equates to in terms of our total budget is you add the column E plus column F. That gives you a total of um net column V. Which shows um on the expenditure side, seven point two million. And then, of course, if we did all these projects, uh we would be drawing from our reserves a total of one point five million. So then here, I summarize um. Draw would be from our general fund or from the various funds that we have here. I'm sorry, go to the next page, I remember not here.
So question him before you go to the next page, so if we did nothing, then we have a break-even budget?
Yes, we have, if we did nothing, you have a surplus of eighty seven thousand.
So these are all funded from our reserves?
Uh, all the projects would be, all the ones that are red.
Projects, yes.
Uh, so in that case, yes.
Yes.
It would be coming out of your reserves.
Minus eighty seven thousand dollars, which we.
Would be adding to our reserves.
From the expenditure.
Yes.
Quick question, um the community-based grant. Are they, with what um what section are they in, under expenditures?
Uh, community-based grants, uh let's see.
But it didn't, it didn't get a call up.
Oh, no, that's a, that's something that I consider recurring. So that's part of uh one of the categories, I believe it's general government.
General government, okay.
So that's part of the column E. So column, again, column F through U. It are what I consider non-recurring projects that uh the city. You know, just needs to prioritize which ones are.
So it's trying, we need to figure out which projects we would like to fund for the year.
Exactly.
And they're all from the reserves?
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily.
If we were to do, for example, I'll just start with flock cameras, that's a fifty thousand dollar project, but it's. That that would.
Oh, we need to start from scratch, okay, Doctor.
Yeah, that's why I share with you the 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 page before that. It shows all the revenue sources for all these projects, and the only ones that we've identified funding sources uh. Would include the community center, which was six eighty five. And six ninety five, and then the um. And then the um. Payment management program um two hundred thirty eight thousand was identified as either grants or other funding sources. And those are typically restricted monies that are earmarked for those special projects. So the net cost, for example, in looking at column S. The annual payment management program. You know, it's gonna cost the city four hundred thousand, but the good news is we've got funding uh that helps pay for that. Yielding a net draw from our reserves, a hundred sixty two thousand.
So if we do it now, so if we wouldn't do any street maintenance, we would not save four hundred thousand dollars.
No, we would say.
Hundred sixty one thousand.
Well, you would save the four hundred, because the money doesn't get, it's um, it's earmarked, it's.
Sure, yeah.
It's restricted, you can only use it for.
Cutting the projects will take away the revenue also.
Yes.
Yeah.
Because it's restricted money.
And the same is true for most of these. Um, projects will apparently accept all the money.
That's why in the green area, um that's primarily projects that are related to uh your general fund. Yeah, but hence it would come out of your general fund.
Yeah, what I'm saying is, for example, the community center.
Yes.
One point two million, if we would not do that, we would not save one point two million dollars. We would save five hundred thousand dollars, because the revenue would disappear. And the expense would disappear, so the net change would be five hundred and four thousand there.
That's correct.
The same is true for many of these projects, if you take away the project, sure, you take away the expense, but you also take away the revenue.
Correct. So that's why, when you look at the um, the 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 bottom row. I'm looking at the expenditure page, which is this one here, you can see that?
Yeah.
That that's why I show the net surplus slash deficit. You know, if you decide to eliminate, let's say, column L with that fifty thousand, then obviously. There's no expense or there's no draw against your uh your reserves.
Yeah, but the six ninety five for the community center was not in column E. Which is where we have the balance budget or the the small surplus, that was if we were to. Take that project on and that would, and that would be using the number in column F, correct?
Yeah, so column, column F is the sum of columns K through U.
But I'm just saying, right now, using using column E, which is what we said would give us an eighty seven thousand dollar surplus. That number would not change if we did not go forward with the community center.
That's absolutely correct.
Okay.
So so I I was trying to make this um analysis easy to understand where. You know, let's say you you eliminate one of the projects, well, then you're no longer gonna have this net. You're not have to say net draw of five forty one.
Sure.
So so can I ask you a question? So in order for me to better understand this thing, right, I did two things. I subtracted out roughly six hundred and ninety eight thousand in grants from the revenue. And I subtracted out one point two million from expenses.
And you did?
Okay, so for the current year, twenty three, twenty four, that puts our expected total revenue at five point eleven million. And our expected total expenses at five point one five million.
But we didn't count that as revenue for this year?
No, this is, again, these are mutually exclusive, so column E is its own budget, if you will.
Yeah.
All the projects from column F through U, those are projects that are not related to um the general fund budget.
So we're.
So you're absolutely right.
This year.
I'm sorry?
We're almost break even this year.
There's.
We spend about forty K more than we take in. Right?
No.
No?
I'm sorry, I I think I lost too.
We had a net surplus this year or will of two thirty five.
That's what we're projecting is.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we must have our lecture.
Um, thank you, I've got, I've got some questions and you don't want comments, you want questions now, is that correct? Or can I mix them?
It's a study session.
Oh, okay.
I think anything goes.
So. What I've been thinking, as I've been on council for the past four years and going through the budgets. Uh, is that we were making around two hundred and seventy five, three hundred thousand a year, that's that on an ongoing. That's how, that's what, not breaking even, and that's why the last stu- study session, I asked, let's make sure that we're dealing with what. I I moved the budget so we break even on a recurring basis, I didn't say we should be making two seventy five or three hundred. You follow, you understand, okay? So when I look at where are in column E at the bottom line there where it's eighty eight thousand eighty, or sorry, eighty seven thousand three eighty one. I'm thinking, really, that number should be around two seventy five to three hundred. Okay, so that's where, that's where my thought process is. And I think that we have to really look at what our increases are in there. And what's, what do we do? How can we reduce those costs so that our, we get up more closer to the two seventy five than the eighty seven, okay? Um, when I'm looking at some of these, uh some of these other increases. When I see something that's more than the rate of inflation, I'm starting to, in the, in the ongoing operations. I'm starting to see some some changes that are structural, that have to be structural, or it obviously it's greater than the rate of inflation. When I'm looking at this, at this sheet, and I'm saying, what should our, if this was what our expenses were. If we approved this budget, then it would indicate to me that over on the right-hand side in, under column I. It's six percent increase in expenses, right? So then I'm thinking we should have a six percent increase, just in broad terms, going back to the the fees that we charge, should be around six percent. Right, you you follow, like, plus plus or minus, but you know, it it shouldn't be two point six. Because we're going up by more than the rate of inflation here, okay? Um, and then when I'm looking at these projects. And let's just look, look at the, at the one sheet that has the total expenditures and the net surplus deficit. Right on the, on the project, the columns D through W. Or the.
B.
Or E, well, yeah, the the sheet that, so E through B. So I look at that and I say, okay. The twenty five thousand under the finance and accounting, we've got a one-time cost of twenty five thousand. But that software is gonna come with some license fees, right? So it's gonna affect our ongoing budget. I look at the um. At the, what was the the flock cameras? Flock cameras are fifty K one-time expense period, or is it an increase of fifty thousand a year over the next number of years? No, but there's a small, they're not small, it it's a smaller yearly maintenance fee, it's not fifty K per year. But.
I think uh.
City manager has some numbers. So we're still going through the proposals um with the vendor on that, but um based on a seventeen camera proposal. It will be fifty thousand dollars a year.
Okay.
Ongoing. And it will be a sixty thousand dollar installation, so in the first year, it could run us as. And it will be a sixty thousand dollar installation, so in the first year it could run us as much as a hundred and ten thousand. But it is fifty thousand on an ongoing basis.
It's 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 around three thousand here.
Okay, I I'll my my point right this, yes, there there's. There is recurring, so we're increasing our ongoing cost, which means there has to be a a value, a a business base to do it. What's the rate of return on, right? And probably if you look at what column. Oh, I'm not sure what the what the business case is to pay down five hundred and forty-one K just to get rid. You know, because we're not gonna get rid of that liability, right, right? Yeah, I'm not sure that that that's the best use of our funds, but that's a comment. Uh the eighty-seven five, that's for our general plan. Uh and then the community center, the one point two translates into the five hundred and four thousand. Um couple of things. That will, if that building, if we approve it and that building is built by twelve thirty-one, which I don't think it will be. Since it's almost six thirty right now. Then then it would increase our ongoing expenses in twenty twenty. For twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. But if the building is 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 energy efficient, et cetera, it would have a low operating cost. Or so, but but it would affect our ongoing expenses. And then the uh GSI, the one twenty-five, I'm like, okay, that's. That's not a uh a must-have, in fact, there are some people that say that it it could. It's it would be bad to do that because you're taking away things in the future. Um the four hundred K for the streets and the sixty K for the Dave's app. Uh and then also the the GSI, column column R, so R S T. But there's nothing in T in U. I think that there's funding available and we heard today, tonight, how much the um. The fire safety people are able to get through grants and there's more money available in grants, but I know. Uh and I provided the city manager with with a comprehensive list of of. Grants that are being awarded to to other jurisdictions, and I think our numbers. I think we can get money for that, so I I think we're and we're we've. We're gonna have a study session on that, I believe, in the future. But but those, there's some some budget opportunities in here. That can move things around and I I'm glad that you laid it out the way it happened and I understand it, so that we can start to to massage this. But you know, when I look at the at the FTEs and and where the current FTEs are. Um I think that if we could, we need to reduce those costs. So, I mean, no one likes to reduce costs, but you know, at some point. You know, we've we've been, we're increasing our costs and to the extent that you increase your F, your your pensionable. Employees, you're gonna increase that other number, your unfunded pension liability, et cetera, in the future. I mean, that that just grows it, and that's gonna come to roost. Not in, not in the next ten years, but in the next twenty years it will start to come with the roost, but that will come to roost across California. Across every city. So. So those those are a few of my questions and comments. Well, thank thank you for taking an update to this, but I think some things have been moved around, but I I really have to have to ask, you know. We, if we have to do some some cutting, where is that gonna happen? And can you replace some of that cutting with volunteer effort, and I raised that earlier? And then the other thing is that it may be appropriate, rather than waiting until the end of this, for you to take us through. The last page in your in the documentation that talks about our reserve policy. I'm not sure when you're gonna get to that.
Can I ask a question before you hit it? So I did the same thing for fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five. What I did is I subtracted out the community center grants and expenses from the proposed twenty-four twenty-five total budget. And this shows a revenue of five point zero eight million and expenses of six point four million. So even if we don't spend another dime on the community center, we're one million dollar in a hole for the next fiscal year. Twenty-four twenty-five.
Right, correct.
Yeah, the same is true.
Yeah, whatever project you choose uh between letters K and U. Whatever that number is, that's how much you will not be deducting from your reserves. As it stands now, all those projects total one point six million. Net.
All right, um I think that was a good question, shall we move on to the reserve, reserve projection and reserve policy also?
So if you go in your in your packet, I'll go straight to um. And I have some commentary or narrative on the uh U I L, that's all in there. But if you go down to. Your reserve policy. It's near the last, the last page, it looks like this. So what I've done here is um just to summarize, I think the. The reserve policy says that we should have at least one year of um. Operating reserves in our reserve. So based on that information. Um I come up with these figures down below, which shows if we were to do all the projects, meaning uh. Including the eighty-seven doll- eighty-seven thousand dollar surplus. Minus the one point six million dollar um projects, you'll come down to a net balance of about four point seven million. In the total, I'm sorry, I'm. Four point two million in total uh reserve balances. That's unrestricted um general fund reserves. We have a projected recurring expense budget for the general fund of four point seven million. If you do the math, uh four point two million divided by four point seven times twelve months. It comes out to roughly ten point eight months, dishy to twelve months. That uh our policy has us to follow.
So we're currently below what we are.
If we were to do what I what I proposed in the budget. That means doing um. Uh all the projects, one point six million. So that's what this uh number would be. And then the details behind that four point two million, four point three million. It's really all the unrestricted general fund monies that we have. All the other balances um are restricted for street projects and other projects.
Where where are the expenditures that we need to look at more carefully?
Would it be useful to go through columns um K through R and just kind of get a. General consensus of what projects we'd like to. Comment before Aaron. Um one of the things that we said we were gonna do is we're gonna deal with a two-year budget. And what I'm seeing here is a one-year budget and my comments previously about. Okay, if we license this, if we do the project to uh. Put the software in the twenty-five thousand, I'm just picking that because it's an easy round number. If you had a two-year budget, then you would actually see what the impact is. In year two on the operating or on the capital, the one-time capital cost, right? Again, with the block cameras, with the community center, I mean, that's why a two-year budget helps you kind of see into the future. Is it all?
That's year two.
So these are all, those are all.
Yeah, so.
It's column J. Oh, W, I guess, okay, so so does J, is J reflected of all those changes? Not yet.
Not yet.
So the framework, the framework is there, but it hasn't been done. I'm just saying, I and I was putting the number then, and I was looking at the project list, then, yeah. Okay, um.
Reserve page I should.
See, what what concerns me is that the operating cost at the community center is not even in here. And we have no idea how much that's gonna cost. Which we don't know, are we ever gonna open seven days a week, ten hours a day, twelve hours a day? And and that's important, because if we don't have that, then we're, this is, these numbers are not realistic.
But that's uh at best an issue for the uh twenty-five, twenty-six budget. Because there will be nothing to operate.
Yeah.
Also, there may be income that comes in for the building center, you can rent the space out, do everything to it.
It's hard to make an estimate of operating costs if we don't know what we're going to build, but.
Well, we have an idea, do you do you wanna open it seven days a week, twelve hours a day, or?
Maybe just two hours and. I think we would only open it to the amount that we funded. Until we have a better idea of what we're able to offer. But I don't think we're going to run into any expenses. With the daily or let's just say with the maintenance and operation of the community center, that's going to be significant enough to impact our budget.
Well, without, even without the community center, we're already spending a million dollars. Of our reserves, that's what concerns me.
That's what we need to focus on the budget right now, if it is. We need to start focusing on seeing where we need to look at, what we need to look at. We said it really comes out of the capital.
So what, I just wanted.
I mean, look, look at our expenses, our expenses are high because of of what we pay our employees. It's salary and that and and unfunded pension.
Well, maybe what we can do is go through all these items, first of all, the expenses, but also the projects. And get a little feel for what if we have a consensus about what's priority number one, what's priority number two, and what is priority number ten.
That's, I mean, it sounds like we're kind of doing that, but we're kind of hopping and skipping around.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I mean, I'm willing to start with J, I mean, with K, okay, but if you have questions on K.
Let's start with, go go through one by one, start with column K.
So it says twenty-five thousand dollars, what what is that, is that cost of the software?
No, that's.
Software plus consulting fee?
Yes, consulting fee, um we're looking at having a consultant come in or you look at our systems. And I process for doing the accounting.
How much is the software then?
The software that we have now is like um.
Is it a service or is it a is it a is it a cost?
No, this the twenty-five thousand that we have here, in the proposed budget, is a consultant that'll that I'll be working with. To take a look at our current systems, which um. Which we think is, we're gonna preserve our current system, um software system. But explore the process that I use to do the account. And and perhaps uh exploring um integrating our E permit system. With our general ledger system, so that I don't have to manually do all this reconciliation that takes a lot of time to do.
So so the twenty-five thousand is just evaluating the process of of better using the existing software we have.
Yes.
Okay, so that's the one-time fee, so there, whatever software maintenance fees and everything that that we're currently paying.
There's nothing.
That's already built into the budget and we already know the cost of that.
Yes.
All right. But but isn't there gonna be new fees? When you upgrade the system, maybe buy some of the software?
No, because I think um the the recommendation that um. That we're looking at is because due to the today, the licensing fees are cost prohibitive. The system that we use now, while it's old, I guess it's just a matter of um. Getting further training on the use of our current Sage fifty uh accounting system. But there's room for um changing the process that we do internally where. Uh perhaps we can integrate um various systems. So that it gets automatically fed into our Sage fifty in tax uh system.
Which would speed up, speed up reporting, for example.
Yes, I mean, that's the, that's the ROI, it's being able for your finance director to get his treasure report or timely.
I think that I haven't seen anything on the scope of that project, even though. I I think that it's the financial close process that is the root cause. And I don't think that having someone come in and paying them twenty-five thousand dollars is. Is gonna address every alternative that's available. So I think we should uh keep a placeholder on this, but I'd like to have the finance committee meet. Uh and and provide some some direction upon what the alternatives could be.
Okay, so that one maybe out for now.
Okay, let's leave the placeholder in there and uh. Could be a worth, it's probably a worthwhile potential opportunity, yeah. Column L, block camera. Um I think we decided to go ahead with that.
We talked about, I told the whole room of people, we were, we'd have put it in.
Yeah.
But we didn't say thirteen, we we talked about twelve. If we just kind of played with the number and now you're, you were talking about seventeen, so I guess you talked to Detective Hoyt.
So I got a proposal from the representative that represents government agencies. Uh in conjunction with Sergeant Hoyt. Um they proposed seventeen installations, some of those installations are on Los Gatos. Locations, not even in Palm Serena, but they would affect. Uh Montezaria, I don't wanna give away all the secrets, I don't know what I'm allowed to say. But to make a long story short, the proposal that I received, and I just received it the other day after this report was put forward. Was about fifty thousand dollars a year annually, continuing however long we decide to. Have these cameras and if we decide to go with the plan with the seventeen cameras. And then it was about sixty thousand dollars to install, so the first year would be about a hundred eleven thousand dollars total. And then fifty thousand from then on. I proposed a couple of questions to the representative, if you have a longer-term contract. And or if we reduce the amount of cameras, those type of things um. But I haven't received the results of that yet. I just want the council to be aware that the fifty thousand number that we put in the budget initially was for the ongoing costs to operate. I did not consider the sixty thousand installation. I would imagine that we will not have all the answers before budget adoption. And we will probably have to come back with a separate item, you know, separate. I could try to uh have the presentation for the June eighteenth council meeting, the evening when we do adopt. The uh the budget formally, um I could try to bring the. The, uh, the budget formally, um, I could try to bring the block camera representative in. Uh, with them, perhaps a more, you know, precise plan for council to review and add those numbers in the final budget that night. And that's what my latest thought process was.
So is this block cameras for all of Los Gatos, you know, or just certain parts?
Basically, the plan, I looked at the map. Is if you think of a circumference around Montezarina, if you take the whole city. You know, and it's, I know that it's not exactly a perfect circle. But it surrounds the whole city with cameras at the entry points. Um, and some of those entry points go beyond the, the city limits of Montezarina. Case in point, there's about five of those cameras, I believe, are located. In the city of Los Gatos or the town of Los Gatos.
Okay.
But it would impact our abilities, uh, to, I guess. Catch the perpetrators or view the perpetrators or, or whatever are coming into our city at the locations or the points that they recommended in the, uh. In the map, so in other words, if we were to say, well, let's try to shave a few bucks or we only want cameras in the Montezarino part, I don't know. How effective that would be, uh, based on, I, I haven't had that conversation yet.
What, what can we do with Montezarino first, take a look at it, and then? And here's my concern. We have block cameras that we installed. Here in Montezarino, where the residents are actually paying for the maintenance costs. So they could come back and say, hey, you're paying for everybody else, why do we have? We bought the cameras for three thousand dollars and we still have the paying ongoing cost. So they could come back and say, hey, sitting, you gotta handle this one as well.
Let me, let me just flip that argument real fast and say that. We would say that we created a more compensating. Net around the city, but that's really what plot cameras are meant to do, is to track people coming inside and out of their city.
Yeah.
Wait, wait, I'll be done in a second, and. Unfortunately, we can't cover individual pockets inside of the city. If you would like to have an additional layer of protection, you can continue to pay for that, but we cannot. Justify taking over your cameras that cover a very small portion of the city.
No, this is not small, this is actually fifty houses on Twin Creeks.
Right, well, that's small, thirty twelve hundred.
Right, I, I'm just saying that, that this could happen later on.
I was wondering that.
You know, where, so I think what we ought to do is look at Montezarino first. And then consider Los Gatos later.
But then, well, we're saying Los Gatos only because, for example, the end of Twin Creeks is Los Gatos. But you gotta put a camera at the end of Twin Creeks.
Well, there is a camera.
Right.
Oh.
I'm just giving you an example.
Okay.
You know, there's, there's other streets that, you know, like, like Vineland, on the, on the north side of Vineland is. Montezarino, on the south side of Vineland is, is. Los Gatos, but technically the whole east side of Vineland is the Los, is the Los Gatos street. It's not a Montezarino street, so I think that those are the kind of things that, that Steve's talking about. But I would also then say that. If they don't feel comfortable paying that fee anymore, they're. They're not under any obligation to continue paying either, they call a block and say, we'd like to cancel our subscription.
We install citywide cameras.
Yeah.
And the individual that have already installed the cameras. Are free to take them down and stop their, stop their expenses.
And, and again, if it's fifty people that are paying for those cameras. That's fifty people splitting thirty six hundred dollars.
But that's just Twin Creeks.
No, you said fifty homes, uh.
Yeah, but just, I'm only talking about, oh, there are, there are other cameras on, uh.
Right, but only the residents of that area are paying for it.
I think we should wait for the input from the experts.
Sure, I mean, you're gonna have a serious crime problem, you wanna say? And we're paying how much per month to the police department? Ninety or hundred thousand dollars per month? Uh, people are rich enough to afford their cameras generally, and on my street, there was one house that had an issue and they bought their own camera. So, uh, you know, I, I think we, we, we can try it as a sample, maybe put five cameras or something else. In a place where it really would be more effective and see how that goes. I mean, the camera that they are seem to be effective enough. And to just go, you know, all the way, put seventy cameras right over. I think it's more expensive than getting a fourth, because we are faced with some really tough choices when you look at the budget.
Yeah.
And it's not like we have a whole bunch of money to spare, so I would, I would recommend. Doing the minimal you can, forget the Los Gatos, obviously, but find really four or five hotspots that we can start with and see how that plays out.
My recommendation, because I haven't, you know, had any, uh. Deep conversations with the consultant about the logistics of it. Would be to just leave the fifty as a placeholder as the ongoing expense and then have the presentation made and hopefully by the budget time. If we don't have it by budget time, we'd have to go after budget time. But I would just rely on the consultant's expertise to tell us, hey, this is the best way to do it. As Vice Mayor mentioned, um, it's not, you know, specifically for one street. It's a big net that surrounds the whole city. And at first I was thinking, okay, we're gonna see some duplicates, they're gonna recommend one here and here, and there already are cameras deployed there, but that's not the case. You know, the neighbors that had brought forward this issue, um, for the city to consider on Withy Road. There is probably not going to be a camera on Withy Road specifically for them, right? There's this understanding about the cameras being for specific streets. It's to encompass the whole city and to protect the whole city and catch any entry point of a perpetrator coming in, so.
If I can respond to that, I, I guess my point is, do we really need that kind of protection? Does the city really have a crime problem that's so, you know?
To decide later, I think.
You know, I'm, if you're gonna be putting money in there. So if you want to put it as an item, fine, but do we really have that kind of criminal problem right now?
We do, we, we do, uh, we have one tenth of the population of Los Gatos. We have seventy five percent of the burglaries in Montezarino.
The police report is like two burglaries every month or something like that.
Well, is there a cost sharing opportunity for at least the capital cost or the ongoing cost? Maybe we do the capital cost of the seventeen, but if it helps Los Gatos. Then, uh, is there a cost sharing opportunity with them?
That is a question that needs to be poised towards Los Gatos and we have not had that conversation yet. I don't also know if there is grant funding available as well, um, but, you know. When we're thinking of balancing a budget and allocating resources, it's, you know. Public safety, it's the quality of your pavement, right, it's those type of things that really affect residents' quality of life. So, um, I think those are the, those are the places where council has to make the tough decisions. And, um, other things, um. Maybe don't take as much importance, so. Um, I know there are ways to save some money with our, our city budget, and I can give you some examples, I don't want to get into a big discussion about that this evening. But, um. You know, if the city says, hey, we're willing to do the block cameras, find us fifty thousand or twenty five thousand somewhere else. Then we could look at some things that, from a staff perspective, we can make recommendations. And, you know, I hate to pick on, say, fix it Montezarino, but we get about ten inquiries a year on this and we pay fifteen thousand a year for it. So we're paying fifteen hundred dollars per inquiry, is it really necessary or should that money be allocated towards? Something else, so, I guess we need, those are examples that I can cite on a small basis, the gardening service, I just eliminated them last month. That was eight hundred fifty dollars a month, so, you know, those kind of things we make decisions about. Um, and I can make, I can, I can present some alternatives to council through time, but I. You know, for the purposes of this evening is, do we want to leave fifty thousand as a placeholder for a future discussion?
And I, and I think we do, because we seem to be in agreement that we would like some block cameras in. We just don't know how many yet, and until we see the report, we're just kind of arguing against nothing right now.
We can build up to it, you know, doesn't matter if you want them right at the same time, yeah, do a little bit here, do a little next here, keep like.
And council could decide at mid-year if they want to spend the money, you know, we can do a whole set, or it doesn't have to go in the first July one. You know, or anything like that, all right. But I'm actually a little surprised about the number seventeen, because that's more than what Los Gatos has.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, we started talking about five and then twelve and. Yeah, but again, if, if you ask a consultant what we need, I really, yeah, we know what they want.
So.
Putting in a Patriot missile system, and it could, you know.
Everybody who can believe in the placeholder in here again.
Anybody good? Good?
Okay, uh, column M, City Hall Maintenance.
Painting, oh, this place can fall apart, come on. Is that painting the exterior?
That is correct, we have some siding that is peeling.
Aren't you gonna do all that yourself?
Excuse me.
Aren't you gonna do all that yourself?
Maybe.
No, I think that sounds like a needle project.
You know, um. It's been in need of paint for probably a couple of years now and. Part of the logic was, wait and see what happens with the community center, you paint them both at the same time, right? But, um, we did send somebody up on the roof last year, um, when we were putting in the kitchen. And, uh, they said that you also could use a roof and probably some gutters coming up. So the, the, just general building maintenance, uh, paint, roof, gutters. Needs to be considered. Well, I would say sooner, the more urgent or the more pressing would be for the paint, I think. The exterior paint of this building. And you might have two different colored structures until the other one's painted.
Remember, we have to drop some things now, I mean, we have to, got to look at this thing really clearly.
Well, we can drop what's in, uh, column N.
Very generous of you.
I second that.
Okay, now we get to, uh, one of the real issues, five hundred and forty one thousand. Well, personally.
As I understand it, that doesn't need to be paid.
Well, I think there are some options there. So we have in our budget document this evening in the packet, uh, a couple of examples, there's an amortization table. So a little refresher on this, I think it was twenty seventeen. Uh, Burton and Avery, you may remember.
The page looks like this.
When you were on council previously. That.
Yeah.
So going on our.
Chip break.
Does anybody want the chips, water?
What kind of chips?
I'll bring the basket up.
So a little bit of history on the unfunded pension liabilities. I think it was in twenty seventeen. Um, in twenty eighteen, last time Lon Allen was mayor, Avery and Burton, you may have been on the council.
Three of us were on the council.
And we know, I think you all voted to pay off about five hundred thousand dollars in unfunded pension liabilities. And in twenty twenty. It had accrued again, up to about five hundred thousand, and the council voted again to pay it off. Second basis. Okay. And then we adopted at that time some financial policies that said every time there's a balance, we're going to pay it off. And now it seems like it has accrued again. The way it seems to work is kind of like the housing element. You know, the, the state just says, okay, this is the amount of the unfunded liability and this is your share of it. Based on your population or whatever. Your, um. What do they call that? Actuaries. Um, so we're there again. We have. We have, can you go up to amortization table a little bit? Now you'll see here as the June thirtieth of twenty twenty-two, this is what they gave us. This is the latest they give us. There's usually a year lag. And I know it's almost June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. But in June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four, we'll get June thirtieth of twenty twenty-three. It'll be a later version of this. And if you look at, um. The current number, it says up the upper left corner, four ninety-eight, five hundred and seventy-nine thousand. We can make a payment of seventeen thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars. Scroll down. All the way to the bottom, you could. And you can see that will put us on this schedule that will pay us off in. According to this, six thirty of twenty forty-three, right? We make all those payments. You see how it becomes amortized. Now, if one was saying, oh, it's great, a faster clip, those are the next two columns, the twenty-year and the fifteen-year amortization. Now keep in mind. If we did this. It doesn't mean that, say we pay it all off in one chunk. It doesn't mean that in two or three years, you're going to get another chunk, right? It's just the way it is. Or if the state gets better returns, you may not get a chunk.
You think they will?
You hope they will someday. They can't put it in Nvidia stock, I guess. I wish they could. Um, but with this said. We have a situation to deal with. There's three choices here. Our policy says when you have a balance of the four ninety-eight, just to pay it all off with a lump sum. So you don't have a balance. That way you get to save this much in interest. Assuming we were doing the, the fifteen-year amortization, you get to save fifty-two thousand dollars a year in interest. Every year. So it's probably a better return than putting that five hundred thousand dollars into the T bills or whatever we, we did.
Uh, I'm sorry, you, you're saying like our fifty-two thousand is interest? I would think that.
No, it's amortized. Part of that is principal, but the majority.
You don't want the interest rate is?
Um, it's very tricky. They, they have these three rates of return. Do we have that other page in the?
You would wonder if eight hundred thousand dollars at the end paid off.
Well, that was in the audit report from before. This is actually the report we're working off of. That might have included the OPEB benefits and all that other stuff. I don't. I did not understand maybe a hundred thousand dollar number when you brought that up before.
Well, one thousand, you say one hundred thousand, but it's not, you have to pay it off. I looked at it.
Page where it has the three rates of return, if we have it. There's a page that says if you get like a five and a half, a six and a half, and a seven and a half return, what your, um. Payments, required payments will be. And I think if the five and a half percent return. Uh, the amortization, I mean, we, we owe almost nothing. But they're basing on, off of like a seven and a half percent charge. And I think they offset that seven and a half percent. That's the money that they need to get versus the actual return that they're getting, which is probably. Five percent or something as well. So we're getting that for about two and a half percent. Let's see, you know, the page that has the three levels of return. We're looking for that page right now. Now.
See last year, I want to let you know this. Last year, CalPERS. CalPERS usefully will project a rate of return on their investment. Last year, they projected a return of seven percent. The problem is when they don't earn, when we don't earn their projected rate, there are no consequences, no accountability for CalPERS. They're out there because they just have to build people like us and you make up the difference. So what they can do is they can invest heavily in obscure Chinese companies or in companies with high E S G scores. Right?
It's wrong.
When those companies fail to perform. Financially, we're the ones who take the loss. So CalPERS seems to be driven by this political ideology. Rather than fiduciary responsibility to their members.
Here.
That's all I can say about.
Put this page up.
That was a compliment.
Let's blow it up. Okay, so. Let's see here. We look at this one percent lower average return. You can see how the balance, um, grows. And if you see one percent higher than average return, they're, they're assuming six point eight percent return in the middle. By the way. These numbers show. If this is what they get, five point eight percent will only be eighty-two percent funded. Of our unfunded pension liabilities. But if they got. This is their assumption.
No, our, our unfunded would be the difference between a hundred and eighty-two point four.
All I know is that this last col- column here shows that we have a surplus of funds, three hundred and fifty, if we get one percent higher at seven point eight percent return. So we would be at a hundred and five percent funded. Um. But to make a long story short. We're kind of stuck somewhere in between these two numbers on our return. That's why they're hitting us with a four hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollar.
Well, they're projecting seven percent, they're negative.
That is correct. They're projecting.
What?
Somewhere between, I would say it's probably six and a half percent. It's probably what they're projecting.
So this is, most of this, these projections are based, it looks like on the twenty twenty-two. Um, stock market.
It's kind of interesting because the market has done quite well and since late twenty-two, it started coming out early twenty-three, it started climbing. You know, we could get our report on the thirtieth of, um. June, and it might show a smaller number, right? If the returns have been better. I believe they do send us a letter. Did we get that letter that shows what the return will be? Did they say?
Well, it's probably on the website somewhere.
I think they may have sent us a letter that shows like a. I don't even want to say what the return was.
So there's a chance that this is a false alarm, so.
My, if my memory serves me, I think their return was something like five point nine. It was kind of not good compared to. If they just put the money in S and P, they would do.
They're known for it.
But, um.
Five point eight.
I, I think it's something like that, five point eight, five point nine.
Preliminary investment return, it's twenty-two, twenty-three.
Yes. So we're down in this bucket here. We're, you know, we're projecting eighty-two percent funded. Something like that.
All right, I guess the decision you have to make is whether to pay it full or just choose one of those.
Okay, our financial policy says that we. Pay it off in full. And we have done that. We've done it once since I've been here.
Yeah, and that was.
And we adopted the policy that was.
Well, we had paid lots of money available at that time, we already know. So if you could do that, we're going to have to trim something else.
I'll, I'll just go on the record right away saying, um. If we take the five hundred K out and we use that for the five hundred K for the community center at least. Uh, and then we do some other things, that would work for me. I don't, I don't see any, I don't see any. Burning reasons other than our policy, which we could. We could amend. Uh, through public hearings and et cetera. To address that.
The problem with that though, you never know what CalPERS are going to do. Right?
Well, you don't know what the world's going to be.
We, we've always made those payments based on actual, your data. Right? But there's always this liabilities that come up because their investments don't do well. As well as they predict. So. You can let CalPERS take us down or.
Well, you're only other option then is to leave CalPERS, start your own employee pension program. I mean, are you saying then we, we stop using CalPERS as, but our own self-funded employee pension system?
Well, the logic, I think, when the council, um. Adopted the policy back in twenty twenty. Was. That you'll get a better return on that chunk of money. So we have, say. It was stated earlier, four point two million or something in reserves. And by taking, that's the unrestricted reserves. If you take that, say, five hundred thousand of that. You're effectively going to get a fifty-two, almost a fifty-two thousand dollar payment on that five hundred thousand dollars. Whereas the remainder of the reserves, three and a half million, you might only get about seventy-five thousand. Return. So you're getting it better than we can go get market return, which currently on the treasury bills is five, five and a quarter percent, something like that. Just on that five hundred thousand dollar portion. And because in the past, we've had, had significant reserves. That was a logical decision at the time. It's like, let's have no unfunded pension liabilities and we'll get a return on our own money by paying that off. Um, and that's why the policy had been adopted. So if the council wished to amend that policy, they can, but as it stands now, we put it in. Well, in the first budget study session, it was in there. It's still in this one, right? We still have that junk sitting there as if we were going to pay it off.
Is it possible to, for example, do, choose, uh, doing amortization? And then change next year? Anything?
Are you, why don't you choose amortization? Are you locked in for the next fifteen years?
No, we can put any amount we want towards it. We could put half of it, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars at it and see what happens in the following years. Um, just as an example, I threw a number out there. You know, again, if you had, for some reason, a better or more favorable market return. You can see the policy appear, um. You saw there that there was a surplus. But that seems to never happen in my lifetime. I've been in this business fourteen or fifteen years. It's always been. I think since the earlier mid-two thousands, they haven't had a surplus like that.
So you're not getting a return though, you're paying interest on the loan.
You're paying less interest back to CalPERS. So you're kind of getting a return on your own money by not paying them as much interest. That you could not achieve through the standard market return.
It's like paying, paying your credit card debt. I like your idea though, picking it up. This is not like there's a prepayment penalty. You only pay. You know, forty thousand this month, this year, forty thousand next year, and then decide to pay whatever you want to pay extra.
Yeah.
There's no prepayment penalty on it, so.
Sure, kicking the can down the road.
Yeah. So right now, budget is so tight.
Yeah.
You know, we're going to have to make some drastic cuts, otherwise if you have paid this whole thing off, we just don't have the funds. So, you know, maybe pay the forty-one thousand and leave the five hundred thousand for later on. So the, I think the, the thing we need probably figure out is which of these amortizations schedule makes sense. Uh, the one that, um. Has the lease in the fifteen-year amortization to the order of fifty-two thousand dollar payment. And start with that and then look at it again next year and see where we are.
So how does everybody else feel about doing that?
Just one caveat with that.
One year payment.
One, one caveat with that is in the future, if two or three years down the road, you make the fifty-two thousand payment and you only pay it down a little bit. Say a hundred thousand dollars and yet CalPERS throws another five hundred thousand, then you have like almost a million. Then you're on the hook for substantially more, let's just say a hundred.
We're still on the hook for that. It isn't like that's just coming out of nowhere. So this one, this one is, if you pay it. You've paid it. If you don't pay it, we have the funds. We're, we're out maybe by five thousand, ten thousand in interest for a couple of years. Not that, you know, maybe a ten thousand dollar interest here or a five thousand dollar interest each year. It adds up over fifteen years, but over one year, maybe a five thousand dollar.
We should probably try to figure out how much interest versus principal is in this, um, these breakdowns so the council can see. That portion of it.
So if you're paying, for example, fifty-two thousand per year for fifteen years, right? Then that would have us spending eight hundred and fifty. Thousand dollars to discharge this liability.
That is correct.
Versus five hundred and forty-one thousand.
Here's five hundred.
Actually, according to this, four ninety-eight is what they're starting.
One third of a community center.
Yeah, the. It, many also would less fifteen years later. It's not really the same money you're talking about.
No, but the, the, the actuarial value increases with inflation. Again, so. I just, I don't agree with that.
If you can. A principal and an interest.
Anyway. For, for this year, it's been one month. One year payment and then look at it again next year and see where we are. This whole community center thing.
And all. Well, spending off the full four hundred and ninety-eight thousand this time around.
Yeah.
Because that's the way we had it presented in the budget according to the policy. Whatever the council wishes to do. This is the hardest decision. You have to make financially.
We get all the yard right on the budget. And we're hoping you're going to come back with some real cuts to figure out how we can get close to balancing the budget, because you're all about it.
I think we should think more about what other cuts we can make.
Yeah.
For, for example. We have this. Hot. Office supplies. At twenty-two thousand dollars. For such a small city. Right? So I did, I looked into it and ten thousand of that. Is. Food, food and entertainment. So we can cut that. We don't have to eat, go out and, and, and spend money. Go out to Camp of the Bachi, Camp of the Bachi and spend a thousand dollars. Right? I mean, this, this is what we do. West Valley Sanitation District, when we eat, we have sandwiches. Okay, and that is the best front community, community committee that I've been in and ask him, he'll tell you.
I think you can probably leave, leave those bills specifically to the city manager.
So, so we can, we can eliminate some of those things. Now we're looking at spending. Twenty-seven thousand next year, but why? We should, we should put it down. Maybe we should spend five thousand dollars on food. And then there was something in there for office equipment that had jackets. We don't have to buy jackets every year, that's thirty-four thousand dollars.
Correct.
So, so all these things will add up. That's what I'm saying. Because if you say, oh no, I, I, I want to spend for that. I mean, look, you, you're a photographer, right?
Yeah.
You can take our pictures instead of spending money on, on photography.
Yeah, I, I, in principle, I agree with you, but on the other hand. Saving five thousand dollars on.
Yeah, well, I already, I already got fifteen thousand dollars, five thousand for the food. Five thousand for the jackets. And then five thousand for the photographer. That's fifteen thousand.
We have a one and a half million dollar.
Understood, understood.
And I, I'd rather that the city manager dig into it, let sure, I mean, he's been around. He can let us know what works, what doesn't work, and there's reasons behind. Back with the back, back or wherever that is.
Yeah.
Why you go there, you know, staff morale or whatever else. But he's the best person, I think, to probably give us some suggestion and, you know, I'm sure you realize. It's an issue we have nowadays, but.
Okay.
So tight that we need to figure that out. So do you want to take on that responsibility?
That's my job. So let's, let's, let's challenge our city manager, save as much as possible on these smaller. I don't think.
It's on your.
Yeah, let's keep going. So the column on the five forty-one now is reduced down to fifty, two thousand three hundred and three. That's our first payment. Over fifteen years total. Is that what we guys?
Yeah.
Interest analysis principle. I guess I got to kind of like.
It, it, it may be all, it's probably going to be all interest because that's six, seven percent, five hundred thousand, thirty-five thousand in interest. So maybe only fifteen thousand principal, but we, we buy yourself a year.
We're running a calculation here.
I just did a return, you could see.
And so it's about six, oh, six point three eight returns, what it was, I think.
This is, yeah, six thirty-eight for the twenty year, six point two nine for the fifteen years.
Okay.
Percent.
Okay. Run the amortization on the.
This is like.
On the, uh.
It's like buying a house, right? First year, you're owning. Yeah, basically. It's a fifteen-year loan and a twenty-year loan.
Yeah.
That would declare bankruptcy, yeah.
Steve, can you make? Can you make one-time payments?
Well, that's what we do. We make those.
No, no, but, but at, at any point in time, can you say, here's an extra five thousand dollars? Because with, with my rental property, for example, if I say, what's the difference between the interest only and then the interest in principal? I, I reduce risk of vacancy if I make a payment later on. So we, we can still make the same payment.
We can.
Yeah.
Yes, we can at any time.
Yeah.
There's no, there's no.
Okay.
So later on the year. So.
Do we have a consensus for the fifty-two thousand for the fifteen-year amortization? Is that what we want to do?
Yeah.
From council?
Actually, two thousand three hundred and three, it's okay, or whatever that comes to. Or you can do fifty thousand dollars everywhere.
Okay.
Question for, uh. Our, uh, city attorney, do we have to officially amend that or policies?
If it's going to be, I mean, if, if we stay at that less than twelve months, then we should, yes.
No, on the, on the pension.
Is there a formal ordinance on that or a resolution?
We have a policy. We just had it up on the screen there. Now I can put it back up. Uh, we adopted these financial policies in twenty twenty. And they are essentially law. So you guys.
Yeah, so shouldn't we change the, it's a, it's a, it's a policy, so we should, we should.
Policy.
Right, so we could, we would bring those back. At, when we adopt the budget and you could make those changes back in year.
Okay.
Excellent.
And it could be, if you wanted to, we could say for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. This is the policy and they keep it.
Or we could say on occasion, the city council may decide not, not to do a full payment.
Or twelve months is our goal, or, you know, we can make it a little.
Okay. So can we have that available for the?
About one-third of that, because that's typically when we.
The next item.
The next item.
And you went to it.
Is that a consultant, P?
That is correct, so we already have an agreement with the consultant that helped us with the housing element. And they actually, this is the second consultant that we hired. And um, that estimate was put forth by the city planner of what it would cost to do our general plan provision. Which is essentially mandatory for us to do at this point. So, I don't know if we can get away from that.
But this is where the zoning would change to comply with the housing element?
Um, that that is correct, but overall, the language of the general plan needs to be updated to comply with the housing element. Chris might be able to explain it a little better than me.
Yeah, so we have to amend the general plan to address the changes of the housing element, um, to make it consistent with. Changes to the land use element, things like that. In addition, general plan itself is somewhat outdated. And it needs to be, they need to be updated for now.
But this is the one time expense.
A one time expense.
Once every two years.
Every five to ten years-ish, yeah.
Well, at the end, in the mid session, we have to, we have to show them that we're making our numbers, otherwise.
Right, for that, so in addition to the doing the general plan, you will also be seeing other changes to. Um, the zoning code and other ordinances to address the policies of the programs that you adopted, so we'll be doing that as well, but the general plan itself. Um, all elements of the general plan need to be updated.
So we do have to do the rezoning and the required housing element. They haven't done that.
We haven't done that.
All right.
So everything we can do about that one. The next one is, it's a really interesting one. One one two million, um, net, net amount of five hundred and four thousand. So this is one of the, one of the two big ones, so to speak. So, I have a proposal, which is not going to go all the way, it's going to everybody. Why don't we try to build a community room center, if you will. That is funded completely by grants. And otherwise, we not invest any city money. It'll be scaled down, it'll be a much simpler version, but. Can I ex five hundred thousand dollars out of the budget?
Can I kind of build on that? When we were talking about the community center, I'm sorry, I don't remember the gentleman who was sitting right in the front. But he said he was willing to talk to us and maybe discuss ways that we can build what we want, lower the cost. And maybe even get some funding through him.
It's the guy that builds the, what's the name of that?
Um, Masei, instruction, Masei.
Yeah. So I mean, have we talked to him yet or?
Problem is, we um, we're limited by the public, I'm sorry. So we can talk to him, we can get ideas from him, then he can't bid on it, so.
How come, how come he can't bid on it?
Cause he would have an unfair advantage over other bidders.
See, the the issue.
So somebody came to us and said, I'll build this for you if you go through me and I'll charge you three hundred dollars. Didn't do that. So we're forced to spend more money than we really.
And we have.
So then then. We're just, we're just forced to spend more money so we can make it a public bidding. But I mean, so, so if he had some ideas to lower the cost, but and we put out a, an art, the, and he did, what he really thought was true. Then he could be the top reactor. Like what he, when he was willing to charge us.
As long as he's responding to the proposal we put out there, yes. So he, if he said, I think it should only cost, your roofing cost should only be five thousand. And we had estimated it to be twenty five, he could do that, but he would be held to that number, so.
We have to, we have to, they have to bid on it.
So he would be responsible to do the job and in that job, it would be reduced by the. Difference between what we estimated it to be and what it actually was, and if it, if his cost went over, we would have no obligation to pay for that. So we'd have to negotiate with him.
So, so for example, if he said, you need a new roof and guess what, I've got all the roofing materials that another guy. Failed on the job, I'll give that to you for free. He he would be able to do that and that wouldn't be unfair competition. He he would just include it in his bid.
Then his bid would be the cost minus whatever materials he already.
Yeah, I I think you should go with the bid, see where we come out. And as far as your ideas concerned, I prefer just demolishing the whole thing, making it a dog patch for dogs to come and run around.
Yep.
Because then somebody in the future hopefully will have a mission where they get all the money to build a proper community center. And I want a little shack out there that we call our community center. I, so rather than that, rather than just demolish it and have a dog pass there.
I I agree with you. I would love to have a most beautiful community center and. Problem is, the the bid we got was one point nine million.
Well, we're gonna get new bids.
Right now, yeah, we're trying to scale it down, sort of develop a baseline of a completely stripped down building. That's, that effort is going on right now. The drawings are being developed.
Yeah, and I'm glad.
One one two million dollars.
We're wondering if we got those kind of bids is because we asked for an A pay license, which was not required, a B license was gonna be enough. So I think if you do a B license with the same exact sites, you would get lesser bids on it.
So it sounds like we don't want to fund it until we get it, we we don't want to put it in a budget until we get a new set of of bids.
Sure.
I think we should leave it in the budget. And we go ahead and we develop the plans. And then we get the bids in on the new plans or whatever is is recommended. And then we see how it is according to the budget. If we leave it in the budget, we don't spend any, you know, and we don't build it, then that's fine. I also think that we really need to look at the operating costs as council member Turner says. And make sure that those are in from when it's gonna be quote built. And if you look at the one point two, you're not gonna spend the one point two in the current year anyways.
Right, so let's just leave it in there for now.
Yeah, so I say just leave leave it in and.
Your only issue is we will be running a million dollar deficit.
Where are you going with it?
On paper.
Yeah, so it's million plus that million, so we now two, right?
All right, first first million you have to work on.
This, I mean, you can't count.
The way I look at it, you've got a million dollar piece of land is sitting there, we're not using it. So, you know, that that property, that property is a million dollars worth sitting here. And we are afraid to put a million dollar house on it. If it was our own land that we could have used, we wouldn't do that. This is our own land, it's a city land, it's worth about a million bucks and we're just ignoring it the last ten years. So, I I think, and and we made a committee's purpose of to raise money, raise funds to make this happen. But the committee feels like we shouldn't be spending money, we shouldn't do it, and I I think it's going the wrong way. The whole purpose of, hey, raise some money, let's set a decent community center up there, which people can use. And the seniors can use, these fire guys who came in here, they could use it as a place.
Oh, yeah.
And and you know, there's a lot of people out there that could make, would use those types of things.
You can also take that parcel, resell it, put five apartments on it and sell it for five million dollars.
Yeah.
So we should do something with it, we can do something with it.
I mean, I'm I'm happy with the dog bank.
We can, we can make money in a way.
Yeah.
We have that power.
There are certain laws that we have to abide by. If the city has surplus property, we have to first operate to affordable housing agencies. There's a pecking order, the next uh, government agency adjacent, say a fire department and or. Who knows, affordable housing, so we may or may not be able to redevelop it for profit as was suggested.
Okay.
Is there, am I right?
You are right.
I agree with you.
What what I was saying earlier, uh, with all these projects, we're one point four eight seven million dollars negative. We just removed about five hundred thousand from it, so we're still a million dollars in the hole. That's why I'm not breaking the law.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so we can't speculate on property, yeah?
We can't buy property. So, so one of the things that that has not been discussed. At the community center level is there's around a hundred and twenty five to a hundred and seventy five thousand. That Valley Water would be able to give us under the Small Cities Partnership. And, you know, I, those discussions were going ahead and they were asking. You know, what are you gonna build? What can it do for us? And we weren't able to answer those questions, so, you know, it's. It's not as simple and as confined as as what we think it is. I think there's other opportunities out there. When you, when we start to deal on the possible grants that are available for our streets. There's even more bids, you know, it's gonna go against the the million dollars. And then if we grind down our operating costs a bit, then on the, on the other calculation where we have to have. Uh, the the reserve meeting the number. If you reduce your, your uh, general fund expenditures, then you're, you know. It it creates more opportunity for your reserve calculations. And then, and then if you talk about your reserve calculations, you know, this is a, this is a, that would be a hard asset. It's not like you're putting something in that's disappearing, right, and and a. Something with a fast depreciation, it's gonna sit on your, it's, it's gonna be an asset of the city for years and years. Just like this city hall essentially.
So so let me make a comment here. Why can't we build to the money that we have? Why do we always have to overbuild? Cause if we get a grant, right, they're gonna require solar, EV, battery charging station. All these things that are so expensive.
But there's a return on the investment that you make in those.
For what?
Reducing your operating costs. Reduce the amount of water you use, reduce the amount of electricity or the amount of energy that you use, make the building more efficient. You know, you 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 may disagree with that, but I'm sorry, Rowena, when when I'm looking at something and I can, if I don't. I can invest in the capital cost to reduce the operating cost.
Yeah.
So if we eliminate the the, the the community center, then we get five hundred thousand dollars more.
And our deficit will go down by five, five dollars, yes. But what I was proposing earlier was, we have about seven, six hundred eighty, seven hundred thousand dollars in grants. Why don't we limit ourselves to that amount?
That's what I'm saying. Let's spend what we have.
Get that grant, we have to put in. The basic stuff that the grant says that we have to put in.
We can do that.
Yeah, but you still have to then rebuild all of the stuff that was torn out of the building too. Can't just use that money and 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 put the building back together.
But this, I, I, the city, our job is to provide services, community center will provide services to the community. We can't run away from that. A smaller one is not gonna be able to do that job. You know, we can get four people in there and that's about it. You went to proper center, we, there'll be a lot of things that you can use for. So let's, let's start shy from it. We have to, we have to figure out what other places out there that we're spending too much money. And there are real goals here that I'm hoping the city manager will come back.
So you'll come back with the, they'll get, they'll have.
And I'm hoping the committee, really, the committee should be raising some funds. There are people willing to push their good funds.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's where the committee should be focusing on.
Well, why don't we for now leave the one point two million dollar in? Uh, we'll keep working on that, uh, much simplified design and see where the sort of the baseline bid comes in.
But regardless of what happens, the decision to spend the money is when the bid, when the proposal, request for proposal goes about out. And the bids come in, that's when the decision has to be made, regardless of what the number is in here.
Yeah.
Yep. Alright, so we're leaving it in.
Leaving it in.
And then you add in the operating cost, right? That's what I keep asking.
Once we determine what will be, if it will be built, then we can have a better idea what that would be.
I really think that that's a good point and we need to have the operating costs in there.
Because then you have no return, it's just expense.
But let's be realistic about that too. There won't be any operating expenses and just coming fiscal year, it'll be zero.
That's right.
Yeah, so we don't have to put it in.
But the next year, the next year, the next year, they should be in that two year budget, right?
Yeah.
In six months of that two year budget.
Okay.
Four hundred thousand dollars the next time, what is that?
Column R, Green Stormwater. Do we have to do that?
So what was that?
I think we can defer that.
The hundred twenty five thousand for the Green Stormwater. There's some sunset date on that. We can find out what that is.
There was, no cities that, or only one city or two cities that I know are doing their GSI projects. I think that's deferable. I thought we could pull it in and do it at the same time that we did the community center. I didn't realize that, you know, how tight we were gonna be and if there's something that you have to push out, that I would push out.
Yeah, agreed. I could find out, I think, I was under the impression it was like a mandated, unfunded mandate, so to speak, that we're on the hook for. I could find out, um, you know, when or if that is true and what the deadline is. Also, I understand we're only responsible for about eight thousand square foot of area to do.
Yeah.
So we might have too much money in there for that. Um, it probably could be done for quite a bit less.
Okay, I think you need to have an update for the.
Well, you're doing the whole update of everything.
Sheila Tucker, so that's part of it, that's part of it. Okay, I'd say there's a number of those programs that.
No, I'll be, I'm gonna see if we can reduce it.
You know her? She's the packer, yeah.
Of course, yeah. Sometimes she did our, our community. She is the executive director of West Valley Clean Water. That is in our financial statements and they are considering a name change, just anyway, so that's who's going to do this.
I cleaned Highway nine before.
Oh, you did?
Yes, that's right, that's right.
Yeah.
You know, it was here. So for now, so we just leave it out. And if we absolutely have to do it, we'll just do it next year.
What we could do is leave the one twenty five in tonight, but by the time we bring the final budget document in a couple of weeks, we can have an update. On whether we can completely eliminate it, postpone it and or get a price on the size of. You know, the eight thousand square foot.
The absolute minimum if it is required in fiscal twenty four, twenty five.
Yeah. Agreed.
Eleven o'clock.
Can we order breakfast?
Right, we have a kitchen.
Any old patients.
I shouldn't say that.
Four hundred thousand dollars.
I I've, I've gotta believe there's, we really need to turn over every stone for the grant money. I think there's grant money that's available.
There is.
Yeah, I know for sure against the uh, Dave's app, there's money available for that. And I just, I went through that with with uh. With our city manager and I know, don't think he's gone through that with our city engineer yet, but you know, nothing is without work. And I think there's dollars there.
Yeah, but I've said, I've said it a couple of times, a good grant writer pays for it, it's got to work ten times.
Right, I owe a five hundred thousand dollar grant. I volunteer some of my time to help do that, you know?
Yeah.
I I took also a return manager, we had a grant writer.
What's that?
You said you have a grant writer, grant writer in Montesera?
That lady that, she's sitting here. Well, Sarah's Chafin.
Sarah?
She's a grant writer?
So in my history, working with Montesera for and a half years, we have received five or six grants just with our existing staff. Prop sixty eight, the Silicon Valley Clean Energy Grant, the other Silicon Valley Clean Energy Grant. We received a Cal Ops grant for forty thousand, I think we received another grant for the um, for housing elemental. As well, so we've been very successful obtaining grants. Sometimes we'll get something where they'll offer five thousand for a recycling grant. But you have to have all these receptacles in place and all these things which we don't have, doesn't fit. Or there was a gentleman in here speaking about the fire grants earlier. I did look into some of those grants in the past, those are. We'll, we'll need some assistance to try to obtain some of those things, but to make a long story short. There could be some grant funds available through VTA or or whatnot, I, we, you know, we will see. I did work, you know, approach city engineer on that, so. We'll see what we can get. We, we like grants as well.
Is Sarah a grant writer?
Yeah. Sarah took a grant writing class a few weeks back. She's very resourceful and very well connected in the community.
And this could be a topic of a future brainstorming session also.
Precisely.
Session on grant writing. I know the city of San Jose is using an AI program to do grant writing.
Yeah, you'd mentioned that before, yeah.
Yeah. Alright, so we're at the four hundred thousand dollar, what are we doing with that? Streets, four hundred thousand dollars.
That's where I think there's some grant money available.
The snap on sixty-one.
What do we want to do with the four hundred thousand?
We have one sixty-one over and above. I think we, are you saying we're one sixty-one surplus in that column?
No, that's a deficit.
I doubt I said once.
Yeah, we do have some money. Oh, going against that, okay.
So, so the four thousand, is there some actual streets that need to be fixed? By as part of that four hundred thousand, or is that just uh? Let's say it's.
Well, why, why don't, why don't we just put the amount, the amount in that that we have money for already? And if we get additional money, then it's gonna always bump it up at any time. We can have a mid-year adjustment, mid-year adjustment. So this, how's that count?
That we've been lowering it by a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars.
We moved it from negative a hundred and sixty-one to zero, right? Yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah.
If we can do that.
So whatever, you're getting the four hundred thousand dollar number?
No, no, no.
What is your, those kind of one?
No, the, the four hundred, it, it goes down to whatever. Two thirty-nine.
Yeah, two thirty-eight, forty-seven.
Yeah. Yeah, whatever. Two thirty-eight to forty-seven.
Two forty-seven, yes. Okay. Okay.
Sixty thousand.
Oh. So the, the thing with the S curve is, I believe based on my review of the grants. That have been earned that, that. BTA does, and when I went through and looked at all what the names were. They have words like pedestrian safety, uh bicycle safety. Um, zero, vision zero, or whatever, I, there was a whole stack of, of pages. And, and when you look at other cities, they have like two more zeros behind them. We're talking like.
Sony Benow.
Study, like, we're talking several million dollars. All we're asking for is a sidewalk.
Yeah.
Where, where there's known accidents, where the, you know, anyways, so. I think we should leave that in as a placeholder. And, and. And work like crazy on the grant side.
Or reduce it by thirty-five thousand, make it zero. And if we get grants, that we increase the, we can put it back in later, same with the streets. Same with the street improvement.
I agree.
Okay.
Changes in twenty-five thousand, so drop twenty-five thousand from that, and. That's twenty-five, so it's a great even.
Right, yeah. Okay. Are we done with this one? Is there anything else we need to discuss?
So this is your twenty-six. Close the two hundred thousand dollar deficit, right?
Well, based on these changes, I'm gonna, I'm gonna adjust uh. Uh, child merits.
Merit, wisher.
Let's get sure of public comment, because it happens yet.
Okay. Let's open us for public comment. Nobody here, is there anybody online?
Have folks online, but no hands are raised.
Okay, thank you.
Well, you think there's an item, um, again? Again, report? Can that wait until next week? Or?
Real good, and that was indicated.
Alright, alright. On the part of this kind of budget, I'm, we're involved, we're involved on.
Let's move on. Exactly, that's pretty good aggression.
New business.
New business.
Consider and appoint members to the twenty-two and four, twenty-five Montesorino Youth Commission. Staff recommends that we appoint five applicants. Who have submitted a uh resume.
I'll make that a motion.
We need to go through the.
No.
Anybody online? I'm gonna script, uh, going here.
Yeah.
Anybody wants to comment, I'll have, we all have the applicants are online anymore. Um, in that case, is there a motion?
Yes, we have a motion.
In a second, yeah, I understand. Do we need a roll call for this? Call in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Five zero zero. I'm Lomberne, I'm considering confirm the twenty-two chores, Montesorino Social Justice Award winner selected by the Montesorino Youth Commission.
So the Youth Commission met last week in special meeting, and they um actually had a. So you have the staff reporting on it?
Yes.
I believe her name is Jane, who submitted um her application. I don't know if you guys have to get a moment to read it, but the Youth Commission actually had a very interactive. Um, you know, interaction with her in terms of what she submitted and her reasons behind that. So they had elected, she was the only applicant, but they felt that it was still really good, um, brought to go and appoint the. Awards her for her um selection of the nonprofit.
Yes, so Jane Wild. Uh, is essentially chose a, a, a nonprofit. That builds homes for the homeless. She was working down in Mexico on behalf of Saratoga Federated. Sounds like Saratoga Federated Church. And uh, the name of the charity that she has chose is Amor Ministries. And that will be the recipient of the one thousand dollar social justice award, should the council. Say yes.
I'll leave that to the commission. And I move that we um. Confirm the social justice award to.
Okay. Call in favor. I'm in public comment. Uh, there was since there's nobody in chambers, is there anybody online who wishes to comment on this item? Please raise your virtual hand.
No hands are raised.
No hands are raised. We have a person in the second calling, please say aye.
Aye.
Approve unanimously. Item number ten, consider and accept this. Number eleven, consider a resolution setting up appropriation limits for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. And I have to say that out of all the items on the agenda, this was the most mysterious one to me.
It's mysterious every year.
So, as you know, as mayor, that this is an item that comes up every year at this time, budget time, it's setting again a limit. It's a state law, usually the GAN limit far exceeds the budget, it's really a non-issue. They give us some information every year, like a multiplier. We multiply that by our population, we come up with a figure and. We present it to council for adoption.
Yeah, they give us a per capita change rate to use. In this case, the, the rate was. Three, six, two percent. And then the population change was point zero. Point zero five one. Now, based on those factors, we. Uh, multiply that factor against last year's limit, which brings us to. Uh, eight million, nine, two, eight, five, two, eight. Um, based on the. Proposed budget that I presented today, uh, total expenditures on this budget was seven million, two thirty-nine, one oh six. Which but just uh one point seven million under that limit. So we're in compliance.
We're good.
Okay.
Take public comment.
And go ahead.
Do we need to make a motion?
Yeah, he's gotta take over comment first.
Public comment, is there anybody online who wishes to comment on this?
No, he doesn't. No, he doesn't.
Okay.
I move that this is for discussion. Is there a motion? I move that the council. Accept the city council regulations setting the appropriation limits for the fiscal year twenty-four.
Call in favor, please say aye.
Sorry about that. Uh, council member, uh, Echach?
Aye.
Council member Locking?
Aye.
Council member Turner?
Hi.
Nice, Mayor Craig?
Yeah.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes. Alright, um. Committee, committee reports. House Mayor Gray.
I think you're reporter.
Council member, yeah.
I think you're reporter. Oh, except to remind you again to let uh. At least I know, maybe it's happening or not, because I'm meeting you now.
I have. Okay, so I have some bad news and I have some good news. So I'll give you the bad news first. This, this is on the San Jose, Santa Clara sewer treatment plant, right? Yep, sewer treatment operation. And here's the bad news. San Jose, Santa Clara increased its operating budget by eleven point seven percent. So the burden of that will fall on the residents. The residents of Montesorino, Oskana, Salatoba. And Campbell belong to the West Valley Sanitation District. Cupertino, Milpina, San Jose, Santa Clara, they're, they're basically tributary agencies. So as a result of the increase of eleven point seven on their operating budget. Uh, Cupertino proposed a sewer rate increase of five percent at coming fiscal year. San Jose is looking at a nine percent rate of increase for their service area. And here's the good news. West Valley Sanitation District is not raising rates this year and will absorb the eleven point seven percent rate discount here. This is the outrageous cost increase. From, in the sewer plant, and, and, and our next meeting, I'm gonna. Share with you some of the litigation that we've been into that I couldn't talk about basically for the last two, three years.
So is it, they have an arctic surplus that they could absorb that increase?
Who's this?
Well, uh, West Valley is gonna absorb the, the cost, right?
Yes, they're, they're, they, they manage their, their budget very tightly. And even with our delegation costs of a million dollars plus this, they still have the surplus.
Thank you. Um, council member, Echach.
Uh, well, the BTA Policy Advisory Committee, the uh, meeting for this week, for next week has been canceled. Uh, Clean Water Authority, um, I think I mentioned before that they're gonna be changing their name. And, and that's uh, in motion now. They're looking uh, to make some changes. West Valley Solid Waste Management Authority, um. There was a recommended increase in rates there. Uh, and that will be flowing through uh, to bills that are coming out in July. Uh, Silicon Valley Clean Energy, they are meeting next week. Uh. And I will probably be reporting or attending remotely, although Councilmember Craig has said that if I can't do it, he would attend. Um, I have nothing more.
Okay.
I have nothing more to report.
Right, I have two items that I'd like to report on, uh, Silicon Valley Animal Control. Everything is set for, uh, Oskanas to join the organization. So in the next meeting, I will put the um. Updates to the JPA agreement of this organization on the agenda. Because uh. We'd like this to be approved by all five cities, so they can be effectively go online in sometime in August or so. So. The other thing is um. City manager and I attended the Vip of California Cities meeting a couple of weeks ago. Which is very interesting, the main um, topic was a twenty billion dollar bond. That they wanted. Issue for affordable housing.
That's insofar.
Uh, which has needs sixty-six, which took thirty approval by the voters in California. Uh, there were some major politicians presenting. Uh, asking for, asking for support, they even left a uh, a sign for us to show for the. So, I'm personally very skeptical about it, it's nothing, I think the twenty billion dollars. Um, the way it's structured is our residents will have to pay nineteen dollars. Per year, per hundred thousand dollars of their um, assessed value of the house. So let's say you have a five million dollar house. You pay fifty times nineteen dollars, it's almost a thousand dollars a year, a year for the bonds. Uh, for the next twenty years or so. Yeah, and.
If you're gonna guide the five million dollar, you can't put that in.
Yes. Anyway, I, I think uh, they did some polls on.
Oh, it's the assessed value, the pure assessed value.
Value of your house.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So they did some pre-polling as they always do, and it's polling around fifty percent right now. And it needs to, it needs two-third approval, so I have my doubts. Anyway, that's what I have. Councilmember comments?
Oh, I do have one. Okay, so I don't know if you know who Tracy and Fantino is. She is a, a longtime Montesorino resident. And she's also chair of the Silicon Valley Business Pack. It's a leading group advocating for local and small and medium-sized businesses. And what she's done is she's given the thumbs up to Don, Don, Don Bell. I don't know how to pronounce his name, Ken Batra, on, on doing the city homelessness audit. Right? And the main reason, according to Fantino, the city housing department. Has ignored basic business logic and ethics for decades. And the, and this bill is way past due. So what they're doing is they're. They're looking at the failures of the San Jose homelessness programs outlined by the California State Audit. And they're, they're gonna do basic accountability, business accountability, and they're gonna audit their protocols. Regarding how the money is spent. So, uh, she's leading this effort with, with Batra and, and Don, and she's a Montesorino resident. She lives right here in um. Highway nine, the other side of Highway nine.
Interesting. Thank you. Any further comments?
Um, one of the things that uh, I wanna make a comment on, and it wasn't under the committee reports, is the uh. Uh, Finance Ad hoc Committee will uh, have a meeting.
Good. I will attend the meeting. Call it at your convenience. And not, not while you're in, are you, sorry, if you want? Okay, uh, city manager to report.
Two items, one is, there's a couple new speed bumps over on the skirt, you might have noticed those. So they seem to be working well, staff installed them in the past week, and we observed them. And people are slowing down for those turns, so we will see what happens next with that. Um, we just have to install a little bit of signage. And Cities Association dropped off these signs the other day. Oh yeah. This is for a new nine, uh, nine eight eight mental health phone line. If you would like to sign a yard sign, there they are, that's it.
Oh, no, this, I thought this was for the twenty billion dollar bond.
No.
Not, not yet.
Yeah. That's it.
Those will be gold frame.
And uh, future agenda items? I already mentioned, uh, animal control, JPA review, next thing. Anything else?
Finance committee, if you need to put down a. Additional items need to be put in there. And you've got the, the policy adjustment. Okay, so the next meeting on the budget is gonna be a final meeting, but then they will shut all here.
June eighteenth will be the budget adoption.
Okay.
We have to adopt it by July one.
Alright, so that's gonna be the final meeting.
Yeah, so now there's always a special meeting in between that date and July one.
Correct.
Potential.
Potentially. But I would ask staff to please, if you have a. You can accelerate this and distribute it as quickly as possible, so we don't have to read it, then maybe finalize this on the eighteenth.
That is the goal, the purpose of the two pre-budget meetings was to get through all these difficult details as you did tonight. And then present the final document. And I'm curious, can you present a balance sheet also for the city or the balance sheet?
Yes. All the funds.
All the funds. Yeah, the assets, the liabilities, what the asset, you know, balance sheet is going to be sure what our net is going to be. And now we have to kind of take the revenue and assets, like the numbers all over, but we're normally like a balance sheet and a top description of the assets and liability and.
I will formally that.
Yeah, I thought the first one better than this, this one. I'm sorry.
But with just a balance sheet, you know what I mean?
Yeah. Because I typically show the fund balances, so.
Yeah, but actually putting it on one page, you know, here are all the assets that we have and here's the liability.
Okay.
That was better.
Whatever you do, you did a good job this time, by the way. Sheets were, must be very helpful.
Okay.
Okay. And we will now move into our closed session.
We can move on, but anyway.
Would you like to open it? Do you want me to do that?
Or, or not, sir?
Right in. So I will be meeting in closed session on two items. The first is conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation, government code section five four nine five six point nine. Case name Padgett versus Wright in the United States District Court, Northern District, case number five zero four CB zero three nine six four six. Staff present, city attorney and city manager. The second is public and private performance litigation, moving to government code section five four nine five seven. Title, city manager, staff present is city manager and city attorney. Would you like to open it, publish a comment before we go into closing?
Yes.
No answer, right?
So now we can be. Good night, all.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, and we are back.
We are back online?
Yes.
Um, the city council has returned from the closed session, and there is nothing to report from the closed session. With that, I will adjourn the meeting of the Montezarino City Council of June fourth. Still on June fourth. At eleven fifty-one P M.